Thank you very much. All right, this far over City Council Public Hearing will now be called to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please. Can't hear you, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Kadeem?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Liberty LeBeau?
Here.
Lee? Peckham?
Yeah.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pereira?
Yeah.
President Ponti?
Pursuant to the open meeting, or any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. I wanted to just note that, obviously, this meeting in this public hearing is being called to order. We are all virtual, with the exception of Counselor Lee, who is, I believe, on his way into the meeting. We don't see him here, but I think he's trying to work his way through. But we're going to get rolling with our public hearings at this time. First order of business for our public hearings is a curb cut removal of Michael Cudo at 555 Broadway. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the meeting?
Second.
Has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Dion. All those in favor? The first item is Michael Cudo of 555 Broadway Street, Fall River, for the removal of curbing as follows. The petitioner is requesting to remove an additional three feet of curbing on an existing 27-foot, seven-inch driveway opening on the north side of the property facing Oliver Street. This parcel contains a commercial building and a residential building. The existing curb opening is necessary for the viability of the commercial business. The additional removal of three feet will provide access to park a vehicle. The property owner was recently approved for a significant widening of the driveway opening. However, once the site work and original driveway construction were completed, the owner requested a small additional opening due to in the original request. To the end of where you're at, with only holding our meetings remote, the clerk's office did notify all required people, as they would for a public hearing, and we did not hear any proponents or opponents that have sent us any communication on this item.
That is correct.
Madam Clerk? Very good. Is there a motion to close the hearing if there's no further discussion?
Motion to close the hearing, permission granted.
Motion to close the hearing has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next order of business is a public hearing for Stephen Steen of 8284 Harvard Street for the removal of curbing as follows. Is there a motion to open?
Motion to open the meeting.
Motion to open the hearing. Public hearing has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
The guys have it. Stephen Steen, Harvard Street, for removal of curbing as follows. The petitioner has two existing eight-foot driveway openings serving two townhomes, and is requesting the removal of four feet of each driveway to improve ease of access to the property. Again, with this item, as we are all virtual, I have not received, and I don't believe the clerk's office has received, any proponents or opponents on this. Madam Clerk, is that correct?
Motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next order of business is a public hearing for Robert Maderas of 97 Whittier Street, Fall River. Is there a motion to open?
Motion to open.
Motion to open the hearing has been made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The guys have it. Robert Maderas of 97 Whittier Street, Fall River, for the removal of curbing as follows. The petitioner is requesting the removal of 19 feet of curbing to the existing 41-foot driveway opening on the north side of the property to allow for additional access. The clerk's office, as well as all councilors, received a proponent's letter for the proponent, which is the petitioner of 97 Whittier Street. This was forwarded over to the clerk's office, I believe it was this afternoon. Madam Clerk? Yes. And he is aware of an objection, perhaps, that has been filed, and he wanted to email the city council in hopes that this information he has provided is sufficient to avoid a referral to the Committee on Public Works and Transportation. He did provide his information, and councils wanted to speak to him. This goes to our city clerk. Please see attached files for photos of non-opposition petition. As per the conversation, the neighbor who complained at 86 Whittier Street has done nothing but harass me throughout the whole process. He currently has a driveway big enough for two vehicles, but chooses to leave one on the street so no one will park in front of his home. The other vehicle belongs to his son, who does not live at this address. I have spoken to almost everyone in the neighborhood, and none of my neighbors have any issue with my requests. I feel I am being targeted due to the fact that they have had one inch in the property. Please ask any of my neighbors about me. If there's anything else that you need from me, please do not hesitate to call Robert Maderas. He left his phone number of 97 Whittier Street. That was the only proponent that has spoke on this. Madam Clerk, did we receive any other proponents on this?
No, no other proponents.
Okay.
There is a petition attached that was signed by the neighbors that are in agreement with moving forward.
With the petitioner, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Hearing that we have no other proponents besides what we mentioned before, there is an opponent on this, Robert Maderas regarding 97 Whittier Street for the removal of curbing, to whom it may concern. As objectors, Jose and Laura Sylvia of 87 Whittier Street to the matter regarding Robert Maderas, 97 Whittier Street, Fall River, of his request for the removal of 19 feet of curbing to the existing 41-foot driveway. My objection to the petitioner is as follows. The information provided by the petitioner is inaccurate because he also has an existing single-wiff, two-car-deep driveway on the east side of the property that was failed to be mentioned. With his request for an additional 19 feet to the existing driveway is a loss of multiple parking spaces, and I feel that is not fair to me because I too have guests that will have nowhere to park. Furthermore, his lot size is 90 by 90, as is mine, which I feel is not right and fair as tax-paying citizens, that he may be granted more than 70% of the frontage of his property to be all driveway, which no other resident of Whittier Street has. In conclusion, I feel that this matter should be further evaluated by the Committee of the City Council. Also, the letter has provided some additional photos.
Motion to refer to Public Safety and Transportation, Mr. President?
Motion to refer the item to Public Works and Transportation has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion before I acknowledge Counselor Dion. Madam Clerk? I can't hear you. I can't hear you, Madam Clerk.
This item is number 15 on your regular agenda, so that would be the appropriate time for a referral.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
I withdraw my motion?
No worries. We'll get to that. We'll just hear the public hearings. Counselor Dion?
Yes, I just want to comment that I did drive by that property today. And if you're facing the house, which is on the south side of the street, on the east side is a driveway that is rather deep, that can accommodate at least two cars. The portion in front of his garage, which was only recently built in the last year, year and a half, can accommodate four vehicles. And then it's the property in between, in front of the house, between those two driveways. Just to give a little background on that, I don't really know how many cars he wants to be able to park, but at the present time, he definitely can park a minimum of six vehicles.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pelletier?
Does he got a business down there? I mean, why does he need so much? You got 41, you're going to 60. I mean, does he have a business thing?
I don't know. Counselor Dion, I refer to you because you drove by today.
He added on a two-car garage, which is almost as large as his house. I can't tell you what the purpose is, if there's any, if he is operating or not operating a business in there. It doesn't appear that he is. There's nothing outwardly that would show that. I do know that when I drove by today, he was putting up a fence right against the driveway to the house that's west of him. So basically, between his garage and the neighbor's house is only the neighbor's driveway, which is wide enough for one car to drive in, and that's all the space that there is.
Well, I mean, let her go to committee. We're going to ask the questions. See why. Maybe because he put the garages up, but it's got to be a reason. A couple of big garages. He's got to be doing something, if I was not saying.
Well, prior to building the garage, there was no parking there. It was the driveway on the east side of his house, so.
Well, we'll get it straightened out, I'm sure. Are you?
Thank you. Anything further from the council on this item? Mr. Mayor, are you okay? I know you're not in the public hearing, but quite a lot of fun is happening.
I'm very high-tech here. I'm trying to get some light on it because people are sending me messages. It's dark. I'm only trying to accommodate you guys.
With all due respect, you're in the public hearing or at any point. I don't think you need to add the flashlight to it. It's not going to do too much.
I'm trying to get some light onto my computer. I'm very high-tech.
You look great. You look great. Thanks. You better just heat yourselves so we can finish our hearings. We'll be good. All right, so, sorry about that. Lost track. So, hearing no other proponents or opponents who've submitted any
Motion to close?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Kilby, seconded by Counselor Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item is Massachusetts Electric Company for Horizon, New England. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Open the hearing has been made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item four, Massachusetts Electric Company in Horizon of New England for jointly-owned pole relocation as follows. This is on Robin Street. One pole relocation, relocate existing jointly-owned pole two on Robin Street, approximately 30 feet northwest of its current location. This pole relocation will service a new home at 155 Robin Street without aerial trespass in accordance with the Plan 29432527, dated 2/12/2020. We haven't got any formal proponents. I will just say more for the record that the owners of this property did reach out to myself and the clerk, as well as a couple of other people in the mayor's office, because they are waiting for this pole relocation to happen so that they can get power in their new home. So I just wanted the council to know that it's not in the form of any kind of a proponent, but a pretty clear proponent that wants to see their electric get turned on. Madam Clerk, we did not receive any other proponents or opponent notifications on this item, correct? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the hearing has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
The guys have it. Item five is a storage license. Is there a motion to open the hearing for Colbella Enterprises?
Motion to open the meeting.
The open meeting has been made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor
Second.
Second.
Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the guys have it. Colbella Enterprises LLC of Seven Star Line Way, Princeton, Rhode Island, for permission to store 24,000 gallons of unleaded super gasoline and 6,000 gallons of diesel fuel, for a total of 30,000 gallons underground, an increase of 2,000 gallons at 372 Plymouth Avenue Lot 1I1910 in the assessors plan. Madam Clerk, no proponents or opponents, as far as I'm concerned, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the hearing? There's nothing further?
Close.
Motion to close has been made by Counselor by Counselor Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the guys have it. Item six is a public hearing for Franklin Service Auto Care. Is there a motion to open? Motion to open. Hearing has been made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
The guys have it. Franklin Service Auto Care LLC of 1101 North Main Street, Fall River, for permission to store two 10,000-gallon tanks of regular gasoline, 5,000 gallons of super gasoline, and 5,000 gallons of diesel fuel, for a total of 30,000 gallons of underground at 1101 North Main Street, Lot 0070013 in the assessors plan. Madam Clerk, is there any?
No opponents, no proponents.
No opponents or proponents on the record. Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Public hearing has been made by Counselor Dion, seconded by
Second.
Counselor Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the guys have it. Item seven from the Massachusetts Electric Company. Is there a motion to open the hearing? It's been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by
Second.
Second.
Counselor Peckham. Discussion? Hearing now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Massachusetts Electric Company for the underground conduit location as follows. On Highland Avenue, Massachusetts Electric Company requests to install approximately 200 feet of underground conduit and underground primary pole 113 in front of 2789 Highland Avenue, heading north to a pole box on a right-of-way at 2809 Highland Avenue. Primary cable to be installed for the transition station and electric right-of-way for transmission towers in accordance with Plan Number 29188604, dated November 26, 2019. And the condition on this item is the construction will be executed entirely within the sidewalk, and full replacement will be required. Madam Clerk, is there any proponents or opponents who have filed any kind of, anything on this?
No, they're not.
Right. Hearing now. Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Public hearing has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the guys have it. That will conclude our public hearings that we have on our agenda tonight. We're going to be at 6:52. We're going to roll right into that Committee on Finance that's happening now. The fourth Committee on Finance will now be called to order. Madam Clerk? Can't hear you, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Liberty LeBeau?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Yeah.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Pereira?
Yeah.
And President Ponti?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting, or any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda tonight is citizens' input. There was one person who signed up or sent a communication in for citizens' input, and that is Colin Dias of 560 Ray Street, Fall River. Subject matter is COVID-19 and transparency. Good evening, Council President and members of the City Council. I want to go on record to thank our first responders, essential workers, and government employees for their continued hard work, and I want to recognize how much they place on the line so we can continue to function as a community and as a society. I also want to further thank the Coogan administration for continuing to keep us informed with updates on what the city is doing in terms of this pandemic and taking creative steps to bring the city together in a positive way during these tough times. But together, our community will pull through. I also want to discuss where there has been a lack of leadership. I hope the City Council remains vigorous in defending our city tax dollars, no matter how big or small the amount. I call for an independent investigation and audit on the financial transactions made by the Carrer administration so mishaps like the fire vote are discovered and full transparency is disclosed. Lastly, I want to go on record to condemn City Councilor Trot Lee's lone no vote for the city planner position. Voting no against an accomplished and former city planner without reason or explanation shows a complete lack of transparency. I also believe that a political agenda was the reason of the no vote, and I will probably guide future votes, and will probably guide future votes. I hope that there will be no obstruction by any members of our city government. It's time to come together and unite as a city during these troubling times. Respectfully submitted, Colin Dias. Hearing no other further citizens' input items before our committee tonight. Due to COVID-19, Essential Services Advisory Government Center is closed to the public. Citizens' input had to have been submitted to our city clerk's email by May 5 at 5:00 p.m. to be read at tonight's meeting. This is the only communication that we have received. As again, I want to reiterate, as I said in the beginning of our public hearings, that all city councils are here through Zoom, and we are here, obviously, all electronically. Throughout the course of tonight's meeting, any vote that is taken before the City Council will require a roll call vote. Next item on our agenda is an update from Mayor Paul Coogan regarding COVID-19. Mr. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thanks. Thank you, Council President. Great to be back to get a chance to talk to you guys again. I think, how long do you want me to talk for, Cliff?
As long as you'd like to get as much information out to the community as you can.
All right, so let's start with, as I do post every day, the number of confirmed cases. People have asked me repeatedly, what's the average age of the unfortunate people that passed away? We looked at the dates of birth today. Many of our eight are in the 30s. They're obviously a very older, an older population, which is what's the national trend. I want to say we're well above 70s. We did have one younger woman, a very well-known community member, that passed away, but the rest of them are fairly old. And again, that's the national trend. It seems like it's really attacking our elderly population, and regretfully, that's what we're losing. As far as our hospitals, I'll talk a little bit about testing. Right now, Bristol County, mainly in Fall River, we've done 9,099 tests. We've had 1465 COVIDs. Problem with the number being that high is South Coast bundles their numbers and their tests, and they move people around from Toby, St. Luke's, Charlton. So those numbers that South Coast, specifically, there's 66, 62 tests, and there are 1,100 positives, covers a great chunk of the South Coast. So that's not really indicative of what we have of positives in Fall River. At Charlton, specifically, we have 33 people that are still under investigation, 12 people in critical condition in ICU, and of those 12, seven are on ventilators. We have 31 positive patients in-house. I saw Brad's hand come up. Am I taking questions, or am I going to wait till I do the thing?
I'll wait until you're done, Paul, but it's up to you, whatever you want.
All right, whatever's easier for you guys.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if you could just continue, and I'll recognize
Okay, thank you. Okay. St. Anne's has done 736 tests, 65 positive. They have zero patients in-house. As we all know, St. Anne's sends all of their positive COVID patients to Tottenham. I think they've sent about 30 up there. And they received back from Morton in Tottenham and Good Samaritan about 97 patients that are non-COVID and need hospitalization. So their swap-off was they would send their COVID patients to Morton or Good Samaritan, and they would take the non-COVID patients down to St. Anne's. So they have no people in-house. They have 27 ventilators available right now, and they all said they're a little short, St. Anne's is a little short on gowns, but everybody else is fine with PEP, and they're in a good spot. So I was very pleased with our hospitals. Last update I want to give you on that was that alternative hospital that they opened up in Buttonwood Park, I mean, it's called Buttonwood One. It's on Rockdale Avenue, has 17 COVID patients in it with a capacity of about 107. And that's where South Coast sends patients that are leaving the hospital but not ready to go home. They don't need the strict treatment regimen of a hospital, but they're just not quite ready to go home, and they've only used 17 out of 107 dead. The hospital at UMass Dartmouth in the gym has not seen a patient yet, which is the way we would love to keep it. It's a great facility. I've seen it twice, and I'm very impressed that they did an extremely short period of time up there. As far as the rest of the city goes, tomorrow evening at 7 o'clock, we're asking all the Fall River residents to go outside or go by one of the hospitals and cheer and clap for our first responders, our public safety people, all our essential employees during the COVID outbreak. Government Center will be lit up and read for first responders, move for medical personnel, and white community for all of our other non-essential workers. We're also asking our churches to respect, ring the bells in support of all of our essential workers. Next, tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. I'm still debating whether I want to go to one of the hospitals or just stand out here on Oak Grove Avenue, but I would love it if everybody just came out and acknowledged that we're still a team in the city, and we've got to keep things united to the best of our ability. Face coverings in public. Charlie Baker's effect order goes into effect tomorrow, requiring face coverings in public places where social distancing is not possible. We're asking people, please comply with that. We're not concerned if you're taking a walk down the street with a mask on, or if you're going into a business or any kind of an establishment when you enter the building, destroy your mask on if you want to work at your desk. If you're fine, take it off. When you're walking around, we ask you respectfully to put your mask on. Public safety PPE update. We have our call three times a week with the police. They are on the hospital call with us. Police Department has, right now, a couple of patients that they're looking at to see if they're positive. The only PPE items they're short of are the sanitary wipes. The fire department staff is well unhealthy, and they have plenty of supplies. And EMS has N95 masks coming in. They're also good on supply. As I said, the Massachusetts dad you guys get every day. From the school perspective, we do, today, we did 3,789 lunches. Since we've started what we call the most successful "grab-and-go" program in the state, we've served 166,528 lunches to our students, hope they're our students, because they're all our students whether they go to Catholic school, or charter school, or whatever. And we're trying to keep that pumping up at least till the end of the year, and then we're hoping that we can use the park program to supplement it. Graduation. There was a meeting today for the kids. We're working on a plan right now that we think will let us acknowledge our seniors, and you can still give them a chance to walk across the stage if you do it safely, with a high impact on social distancing. And again, parental involvement. So that's not quite together yet, but we're getting it extremely close. Having a little bit of a problem with dog park, and we're going to sign up there tomorrow. We want people to understand, we want you to go walk your dog, let him run around. But try to keep social distancing among the adults there. It just gets a little crowded in the park. I want the park open because dogs leave themselves instead of on our sidewalks or someone's front lawn. So let's keep our dog park open, and let's cooperate by maintaining social distancing. A bill paying can be done online, or the drop box on Third Street. That's going very well. I do have an announcement coming up, I believe in a couple of days. We're going to partner with one of our local banks that will then take cash and give people a receipt and help the city of Fall River. For those members of the community that want to go in and pay with $520 bills and try to accommodate them, and I think we're going to have that done soon. Our homeless shelters are not anywhere near full, especially the first step in. They have a number of people in there, and they've been moving some things around to accommodate more people. We're still working on the showers at the one on Main Street, but when we're done, we'll have two Class A homeless shelters so that by the time we end up going to the next link, we'll be able to accommodate people, keep them safe. Streets and sidewalks. Cliff, you sure you want me to keep talking, Cliff?
Yeah.
Yes, please. This is very important.
Okay, streets and sidewalk. Looks like Cannon Boulevard will have the rest of the pavement done by the end of June, and that will go from Tucker Street to South Coast. The project right now is on schedule and on budget, and we want to thank Kenny Yuzendis and their crew for their efforts. As far as sidewalks are going in Fall River, we've spent $200,000 from 7119 to 5520. We've done a number of sidewalks, most of you can see around the city, and in the budget right now for next year, we have another $107,000. And we'll start clicking off that money as soon as July comes around. We have a little bit of money left for them to do South Main Street in front of Kennedy Park, which is pretty big up, and that strip in front of the top of North Park, which is also pretty big up. I'll list the streets being done right now. We're going to finalize that, and those will begin soon. We have approximately $3.9 million, so you're going to see a lot of streets done in Fall River. We're going to see some big name streets done. We're going to get those going as fast as we can. We have the money from Mass DOT and the $2 million that the council was gracious enough to give us back out of Streetscapes. South Main Street revitalization project is in the design phase. The scope of the work is to design a stretch from City Hall to Kennedy Park. The work will be done in phases, starting at City Hall and working towards Kennedy Park. Working on this design phase. Trying to create a safer, more accessible pedestrian bicycle to main through there across our city. That is all. Uh, that is also still in the design phases. That's probably all I got. I can look for some other stuff, but, um, if anybody has some questions, I'll be glad to take them. If not, I appreciate all your help and support. I, or I did, I was remiss. Uh, today we did announce, we have, uh, settled a thirty-day contract with, um, Police Captain Jeff Cardoza to become our new interim police chief. Um, we put together a panel, which the names were released today. Um, met with him and the other two candidates. And I can assure you, um, people that were saying, looked outside of Fall River, not have the pleasure hearing the quality of those interviews and, um, what was said. Those, those three candidates were all extremely strong, all had strengths and all had different, um, personalities. And, uh, the things they brought to the table that would benefit the city of Fall River. Um, I went down to the police station in the morning. I met with all three personally. I told them that the committee had moved on from one of them and the other two. I went in their office, we closed the door and I gave them an interview, um, specific to questions I was concerned about. I came away even more impressed with the quality of the candidates that we had. And I made sure that part of my questions were, if I select A, can you work with him? And then to A, I said, can you select B? And I was assured that we could turn this department around. Put our men, knowing there's a sole focus, make Fall River a safe place for everyone and do our best to keep peace throughout our community. Um, I settled on, uh, Jeff because of his experience. He had a little more on his resume than the other ones, but I can assure you that the other candidates did not lose by much. It was a whisker. Um, I was very impressed and I told our new chief that with those, with the quality of those candidates, all three of them looking in Fall River office, um, and I'm very, very pleased. So again, I hope, and I ask for your support for that candidate. When he comes before you, um, you'll notice a little bit of a different type of contract we're doing with him. Uh, it's what I call a clean contract. We haven't settled on a number yet, but we are looking at ways to amend language. But when everyone sits down, they know exactly what's in it. There's no hidden buyouts or surprises for taxpayers to download. Those will all be removed. The language will be standalone contract, not related to any union agreements. And they will, and he will be in charge of the department if the council so chooses. Well, with that, I'll end. If you have any questions, I'll do the best I can, but, uh.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a couple of individual, uh, councillors who wanted to speak. I recognize councillor Kilby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Paul, uh, welcome to the meeting once again. Uh, Paul, uh, well, congratulations on the appointment for chief. I, I plan on voting for Jeff, uh, Chief Cardoza. Soon to be, hopefully. And, um, so I'll just, I'll just say that, okay? Um, but back to, uh, to some more serious business, I guess. Oh, that, that is serious. Um, how, how do we stand, Paul, in terms of comparisons with other gateway cities in Massachusetts? With, in terms of the virus? If you have that information. If you don't, that's.
Oh, I do. I mean, I know, but I, I look at that all the time. I stay on top of that data. And I mean, you look at a community like Lynn, they have more than two thousand cases. You look at a community like Brockton, they're probably around twenty-eight, twenty-nine hundred right now. Even New Bedford's a little higher than us. We, we're running, uh, right around a little over six hundred right now. Um, and of that six hundred, two hundred, I think she just sent me an updated number a little while ago, our nurse of the, of course here. We're at like two fourteen that I, like what they call cleared, which means they've done their, their, um, fourteen days isolation. They have no more, um, fever, they have no more symptoms. So they're cleared to return to society. Um, so we're not in a bad spot.
Yeah, can I?
Extremely good news.
Paul, can I, I can, I can interrupt. Uh, Providence is close by. I, I don't think that, I, obviously I think their population is much higher than ours. But, um, I think they're up to like twenty-seven hundred, I think.
They're higher, they're around thirty-eight.
They're twenty, I mean, the city's twenty miles away.
Yep. And now what, we have been in a good spot right now. I tell everybody the same thing. Any minute it could change and things could go badly, but, um, there, we were very pleased with the numbers we saw coming out of Catholic Memorial Home today. Um, picked up no more positives than the ones we already had contained there. And that was a huge test. We're gonna get the patient numbers later. But, uh, those people up there are very, very much doing what they're supposed to do. We're having Sarabrington tested coming up. Gone through Kimwell, we've gone, we, we do have a bit of a problem at South Point, but they seem like they've gotten their act together and they're isolating, you know, their positives and separated people. So that's what we need to do. And, um, you know, I've been out there a few times and we'll do whatever we can to support them.
Well, I, I don't get out as much as I, um, I used to, you know, a couple of weeks, well, about two months ago. But I do try to get out, uh, three or four hours a day, uh, my office and driving around. And I, I just wanna, um, just make a little statement for the people who are watching, uh, tonight, that I'm very proud of the citizens of Fall River. I think, uh, by and large, people are, uh, obeying, uh, the mandates by the federal and state government in your office. And, um, so that, that, that makes me feel proud. Uh, the other question I had, Paul, quickly is, one thing I'm very, also very happy about is, uh, you know, we have a lot of elderly high-rises in this city. And, uh, I mean, we've all campaigned, we've gone into all the high-rises. We know how, uh, it could be very tight quarters. Um, and our seniors like to socialize, obviously, like we all do. And I'm very happy, I'll keep my fingers crossed, and I'm very happy to see that, um, we, I don't think anyway, from what I'm hearing, we don't have a huge, um, hopefully not, a huge problem in our high-rises with, with, with the virus. And I, you know, it's, uh, it's for me, it's, it's, makes me happy, but, um, uh, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm surprised. You know, but I'm happy, obviously.
No, it's, it's, it's a good thing to have. We've got a few little spot outbreaks here and there, but it's nothing that's overwhelming the system or put us at a tremendous disadvantage. Um, we're still, um, Ray Hig and, uh, the Fall River Food Pantry and a few others, um, St. Anne's Food Pantry. They're still pumping out the food to help the people that are having trouble getting out. And, um, and we just haven't gotten hit, like you said, we're, we're in a spot right now. I don't take it for granted for one minute.
We've been very lucky. That's all I have.
Thank you councillor, councillor. Uh, we just need you on mute, you councillor.
Okay, thank you. A couple of questions that I have, Mr. Mayor, if you could give, um, citizens some information on this. Real estate taxes are gonna be due by May fifteenth? Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
And how about water bills, um, because I thought water bills and all the bills were gonna be due on the fifteenth, so I had to call people back because water bills aren't excise taxes, different. Like, is there a list that we can get of, you know, whether it's personal property tax, real estate tax, excise tax, water, to know what dates they've been extended to?
Yeah, I, what I'll do is I'll, uh, I'll post that tomorrow and, uh, complete list.
Okay, um, the other thing, uh, that I wanted to add, but just a suggestion. You said that you were looking at banks and maybe a bank to take some of the, uh, bills. Um, also, forty-five Rock Street, years ago, they used to take, uh, parking tickets there or speeding tickets or what have you, but they have a drive-up window. Would it be possible for one of the workers to be there? It's locked, it's secured, um, to be able to deal with that? Just a suggestion.
And it's gone. The window's gone. We went over there. We were either gonna take that window and move it over to our, um, cafeteria in government center, but they went over, Chris Gallagher went over there the other day, the windows are gone.
The window's gone?
Yeah, they're blocked up. If you see them, we went over, uh, Chris, Chris went over the other day. I'm saying if we can go in there, fine. If we can't, we'll take the window and we'll install it in government center. So people would walk up to our old cafeteria, but it, it's gone.
Gee, that's too bad. Uh, and lastly, you were talking about the street and roadwork. Um, and I, I did talk to John Perry this morning, um, because I got a call from Baker Street. Uh, some of the residents there wondering about their street getting done from Brayton Avenue to Albert Street. There's been a lot of cuts there. Um, and John was gonna look at how fresh those cuts were, uh, so that they'd settle. But just when you're looking over the list of streets, uh, to consider that Baker Street. Other than that, I think you're doing a great job, um, keeping people informed. You call back immediately to councillors. I think that's wonderful to have that kind of open lines of communication. And I think you did a great job with the selection of the chief and the whole process. I think it, uh, was very good. Little annoyed that I didn't know who was on the panel and you wouldn't tell any of us, but I can respect that. I think, um, I can honestly respect that. And now that I do know some of the people that are on the panel, it's a, a, a group very diverse. And, um, I think it was a job well done. So oftentimes, I'll criticize you for things that I think should be done differently. But I also take the time to compliment you. This is a tough time for all of us and I think you've been exceptional. With that, um, thank you for joining us and have a good day.
Appreciate it. Thank, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you councillor, uh, councillor, uh, Peckham. I got you councillor Pelletier, you're next. Councillor Peckham.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, how are you?
Hey, Chris.
Um, in regards to the P P E, I spoke to a few people today and they, uh, EMS, I spoke to EMS, fire and police and they echoed what you're saying, that P P E supplies are much better now than they were in the past prior to my resolution. Um, very happy with that. Uh, I appreciate it. Uh, one question that I do have is, in regards to the sanitary, uh, the wipes, they are very hard to find. I've been trying to find them myself. Is there a way, um, I know Diamond donated some supplies now that the kids are out of school. Would it be feasible to go into the public schools to see what they have for disinfectants for the first responders for now and then replenish before the next school year?
I, I, I have no problem with that. I know that when we, we've unvalued, um, uh, Griffey High School, our nursing programs for gloves and masks when first broke, uh, we took it from there. Uh, Diamond threw in a ton of stuff also, but I have no problem. I'll make a call tomorrow to Kenny Pacico and see where he stands on wipes. Again, they're very rare. I'm surprised if one of those organizations hasn't hit us yet, Chris, but it's a good place to start.
Yeah, no, and, and I, uh, I'm just trying to find alternative methods to come up with this stuff because it is extremely hard to find. I know there's vendors out there, um, that may be able to reach out to, but even they are short in supplies. So I, I thought the schools would be a, a good avenue to explore.
I'll check tomorrow morning.
I appreciate it, Paul. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you councillor, councillor Pelletier.
Thank you. And to the mayor, I was hoping that he would do the right thing. Uh, I sat down with the, the interim chief that you talk about, so I guess he's got the job. But I did interview him. He came up to house, Mr. Cardoza, and I talked to him for a good half hour. The resume was beautiful. He's done a good job and I think he got the right choice. And he's young enough that we probably could keep him more than three years or six years. He's, he's a young guy, so I agree with you a hundred percent. That's the way to go. I hope the votes are there. And, uh, uh, Mr. Perry, is there, is he there?
Uh, can I finish up first, Leo, and then let, uh, John come on after?
I'm all done with the chief. I got some other stuff to.
Okay, alright.
Councillor, councillor, is this, uh, is this Covid-related?
No.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll get to, um, uh, Mr. Perry in a little bit, uh, but if you have any other questions, uh.
Well, I'd just like to say as long as they talk about, uh, uh, the Covid thing, that, uh, I go out every day and I take all of us, I take you to set the example, and I wear the mask. I mean, some people don't, some people do. I'm in line at the Home Depot, some got them on and some are complaining, this guy don't have it, he's not six feet away. Let's do the right thing. I think we'd be very fortunate for, uh, that it hasn't got worse than it is now. And we want to maintain, uh, the same thing that, uh, don't get it out of control. And we have to put up with things that we have to put up, you know? Uh, you go shopping, it's tough. Now there's no toilet paper, there's no, uh, Scott towels. Now it's the meat, it's this and that. So I, I think as long as we work together, I think we'll come out of this fine. Uh, when? I don't know, but, uh, we just gotta hang in there, do the right thing. The people of Fall River do the right thing as well. So if anybody's sitting, we're out of masks. With that, I yield.
Thank you councillor. Uh, councillor Dion.
Good evening. Um, I have a couple of questions about protocol in terms of the coronavirus. Um, as we know, we do have people who work in the city who do have the coronavirus. And my question is, are we monitoring them or is it basically on an honor system? Where they just, if they don't need to be hospitalized, they go home, they stay home? And then what happens two weeks or three weeks down the road? Do they go back to work ju- just because they're saying they're feeling better? Um, is it their primary care physician making the decision? Are, are we monitoring any of this in any way?
No, uh, no, that, it's their primary care, Michelle. It's, uh, they talk with their doctor. We get a notified list from the Department of Public Health of who's positive in our city. Um, now the state has taken over many of the phone calls, so we monitor them. I do know that we were calling people and saying, Michelle, it's been fourteen days. How you feel? You have a fever? Uh, you're okay to return, wear a mask. We advise them. But when the state picked up a lot of that, um, monitoring or tracing, um, they, a number of our, uh, positives, so now they're monitoring it. It's still, if Michelle Dion's positive, it's obviously gonna have a primary physician, um, hopefully recommend the testing. And at the end of the cycle, your doctor will advise you what. I don't want people in the city hall advising people about medical issues. They can, they can ask them how they're doing, what their temperature is, but they can't be making diagnosis or recommending.
So will these people? So will these people ultimately be retested and will they need two negatives? Or is it just the primary care's physician's opinion?
But, but, well, no, he's a medical professional. It's his call. Um, he's the one that's, you know, decided what's best for his patients. Um, we don't recommend double testing or we don't tell people what to do. We follow up with the tracing. And again, usually the recommendations are the same for anybody that's positive. And they do, I did see them calling people, but I don't think they have to do as much as the state picked up a large part of the trace.
Okay. And my last question, only because I've had constituents who have the concerns and have asked. Um, so if somebody is in self-quarantine at home who is positive, what type of restrictions are there? Um, do they have to strictly remain in their home? Can they go outside and get fresh air? Um, is anybody inside the home able to get e- essential items for other people in the home? How is that all working?
That would be obviously by the advice of their physician. Um, depending on the severity of the case, what their physician tells them to do, they should follow his instructions. If, if the physician says, go sit on your deck, you're okay, no one's around, well, that's the physician. But we're not gonna be telling people that in government center. That's gonna come from the doctor.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering what the protocol was and, and just people were concerned, so they need their questions answered. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you councillor Lee.
Uh, uh, good afternoon, Mr. Coogan. Uh, I just wanted to ask some questions regarding the nursing homes. We have a community that wants to volunteer and help. Uh, as you saw, you came out to visit during the, uh, event that we had for the veterans. Uh, we've been having that. Uh, it's been very successful and a lot of it has to do with the fact that there's a lot of people in the community that want to, um, volunteer and help out. Um, when, when regarding to the nursing homes, we have about nine or, or more. And, and if you count the, uh, if you count Somerset and other areas, we have almost twenty in the surrounding areas. Uh, is there a way for regular, just regular everyday people to, uh, contribute, to help out, to volunteer? Or is there any type of, uh, specific need that they have that we can be helpful with? The nursing homes being, uh, the, obviously the areas where the most exposed population for Covid nineteen can be. I think you're on you.
When I go down to South Point or something, I'm allowed to go in the loading dock and that is it. If I want to drop something off to them there, they, they, they don't even let you go in the building. So as far as volunteering, I don't know what you could do. Um, volunteering in the city right now, again, we're trying to keep people home as much as we can. And people with tremendous hearts who wanna pitch in, we'll have plenty of work for them as soon as we get through this. Um, but we just gotta be smart right now because it is a, a disease that's asymptomatic. And you could be walking around with it and, and your best intentions, you're trying to help someone and you're really passing it on, so it's scary.
Regarding, regarding supplies or, or things like that, not necessarily volunteering physically being there, but, um, are there specific? But are there specific needs that we can help in a capacity of donating or things?
I know, I know sometimes people are looking for masks, but I got some in my trunk of my car. And I still have some left. I gave away 25 the other day. And you can always have people that are willing to help us make some masks. Those seem like they're still in demand. And if someone needs it, don't be afraid to contact us. We'll try to get whatever we can to you. But the number of companies that have been over to pitch in has been absolutely great. So we're moving along, okay. Your food drive is an excellent example of what happens when people get out there and pull together. But that's also going on at St. Anne's, at the YMCA. There's a number of people pitching in all over the city. And obviously, they can talk to you about helping you if you need them, but you've got so many guys there. You've got plenty of volunteers. The YMCA, when I went down there, they had the same kind of thing, a lot of volunteers. People wanna pitch in, but we also gotta be smart.
I did have a chance to speak to Mr. Cardoza and he, he came, he was very impressive. He came off very well. And when he was, when it was out there that he was chosen, I was kinda glad to see that as well. He really came off very well. And I also appreciate the fact that your office has been very, you know, proactive in getting the information out there on a daily basis. I appreciate the emails. I compiled the information that your office gives me with some other information and I post it every day. And without, without your efforts and the office's efforts, you know, we would be, we would not be able to get that information out there. So we really appreciate that, all of us do. And I yield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further for Counselor Pereira?
I would just like to add this, that I've gotten several calls from people about certain parking lots. People are dropping their gloves, masks when they come out. And I really, kudos to the mayor for reaching out to Walmart and telling them that this wouldn't be tolerated. They need to keep their lot clean. So it's little things like that that the general public doesn't see, but that some of us are privy to. And I think it's important for people to know, you know, that those are the additional things that our mayor is going around doing. So I had so many calls about the parking lots. So I just wanted to, to shout, give a shout out because I thought that was great. Who wants to be picking up dirty gloves and, you know, I wish people, everybody disposed of things properly, but unfortunately. But thank you, Mr. Mayor. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pelletier.
Just one more question for the mayor. A lot of people are paying their taxes, they're putting it in the box. And, you know, somebody says, hey, you know, should they be putting cash in that box or just checks? You've got some of the Portuguese people that think, you know, they can pay, they don't have a checkbook, they don't have this. Do we, do we have a problem with that in the city of Fall River?
I have not heard much about cash in that box, Leo. So I can find out for you tomorrow, give you a buzz about how much money's coming cash. I haven't heard a lot of that. I haven't heard of any problems with cash. But it is why we're kinda be contracting to the local banks so people can go in and get a receipt and feel good.
Well, like I said, I heard a little bit. I didn't hear too, too much after.
I look forward to moving to moving forward with that. Um, so I have another question. Um, easy disposal, not easy disposal, excuse me. Republic, A B C, the city of New Bedford, they suspended their yard waste collections for three or four weeks um in relation to the the covid nineteen um issue. For the safety of, I guess, the the safety of their their people. Um, they felt, I guess, them being exposed to trash and recycling uh was enough. Why didn't the city do that, you know?
Counselor, honestly, it was never even on the table. Um, we did suspend the items pickup, the bulkies, obviously, I'm sure each and every one of you probably gotten some constituent um questions as far as if why we're not collecting items and whatnot. You know, to each community, I don't want to speak to their reasoning for it. Uh, but for me, honestly, I think the yard waste collection of all of them is probably the least um chance of 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 contracting the virus in that sense. I I think that's probably where you're gonna not get it. Uh, handling trash bags, recycling bottles, things of that nature, things that people are generally touching. Um, but when you're raking up yard waste or twigs or sticks, I think it'd be a little more difficult. And as you've seen with the the complaints about the items collection being halted, uh, I think it it would be a long stretch to try to get the residents to understand that we're not going to collect their yard waste. Um, and I on top of that, look, you know what? People getting out in their yards and doing that at least, right? Maintaining their gardens, cutting their lawn, doing yard work that they wouldn't normally be able to keep up with. Um, so I I I don't necessarily think it might be a good idea to take that away from them. Uh, gives them something to do and get out in the yard and do. Um, so, but it was never really part of the conversation, not for us as a community anyway, counselor.
Yeah, I know some of them have resumed pickup again. But I was just curious, uh, that's to, uh, you know, what the, you know, why some did, some didn't.
Sure.
Um, on another note, um, enforcement has always been an issue in the city of Fall River, it seems, in terms of uh solid waste, et cetera. And the reason I'm bringing this up is i- it seems like with the the where we are, people, I don't know if people are just more aware of what what's going on, if they're they're paying more attention. But again, I've had um discussions with people who are concerned because people are putting trash in recycle bins, and I know this has happened in the past. Um, but the fact that the recycle costs us more money to dispose of than the solid waste. Um, and by putting in trash and putting in baby diapers and that sort of thing, again, we're increasing the risk of of our haulers. Um, you know, Easy Disposal has done a great job. I think the people work for them, they haven't skipped a beat. Um, you know, they're they're on the front lines like everybody else is. Um, and I think I'm concerned about, you know, any additional risk. So what are we doing in terms of enforcement and paying attention to what's going on with the trash and the recycle bins?
So our enforcement officers actually just came back to work this week. Um, I've got them on split shifts, so they're spread spreading their time out. Uh, and we're getting back to now trying to get a handle on where we were when when this all broke out. Uh, obviously, I think you remember that the winter enforcement had been disbanded. Um, we had gotten that back in with cooperation of the mayor and the council. Um, and we had been getting them going. Um, they were just about up to a full head of steam and then the pandemic broke. Uh, so that put us back, you know, behind the eight ball again, so to speak. So they're back now and getting their feet under them again. Um, we have a small group, it's three gentlemen at this point that that do the enforcement. Uh, we have thirty six thousand um parcels in the city uh that we service, so it's tough to get around to all of them. Uh, but to that vein, what we're doing is an aggressive public recycling education program. We're working with D E P. Uh, if you look on the website and you check our webpage under sanitation for recycling, you'll see that we've made some changes. Uh, we've added the recycle smart program through D E P to our website page. That helps the residents easily access any information regarding recycling, teaching them how to do it correctly, the do's, the don'ts. Um, to maximize their their efficiency when it comes to recycling. Contamination in our city for recycling's always been an issue. Um, in certain areas of the city, it's not as bad as others. Um, but in some areas, it's it's been very, very difficult to curb. Um, but it's something we continue to fight, and you're right, at the end user facilities where recycling ends up, it will drive our costs up inevitably. Um, so in order to get the best price that we can at those end user facilities, we do need to get that cleaned up. And I will say this, uh, that when that time comes and and the citations go out and the tickets, obviously, we know everybody's hurting right now. And I really don't want to speak too much about fines or anything like that, because that's not what people want to hear. And obviously, there's there's bigger things on on everybody's mind right now. But when we do that, it it's important that we'll have strong backup from both the administration and the council to support us when the residents call uh and are upset that they may have gotten fined for something that they've done.
Right, because again, again, it's not just strictly talking about fines and punishing people. But the end game is the better people get at it, the more money we save and the and the less expense there is for the taxpayer again.
That's correct, so that's why the education uh push is is key, and that is what's at the forefront of our thinking. Uh, but inevitably, we do have to have a a system in place where there is a consequence to it that has some teeth to it that will stick when it ends up either in housing court or in our forty U hearings. Um, but the education is is where it's at, that that is what we're focused on, that is what we're working on. Uh, we have printers, uh, we have flyers rather being printed up now at the print shop uh so that we can put out mailers to all the residents with a flyer that explains the do's and don'ts. Um, the things that are acceptable waste items and things that aren't acceptable waste items. Um, unfortunately, again, school has been canceled for the year, but our intent was to do what we had done a couple of years ago in a couple of the elementary schools, where we go in and we do a presentation with the kids. So as I've said at another previous council meeting, you know, when they become the recycle of generators, they'll be responsible recyclers. Uh, trying to get in at those levels and then move our way up through the middle school grades and and then possibly into the high school. Getting everybody on board, children helping police the parents as far as what they're putting in their recycling bin a- and and making them recycle responsibly as well. Um, so we have some interesting things going on along those lines. Um, and you know, it all again ties in together, so we're trying to reduce what ends up in our waste stream. So along with the recycling education program, we and the compost bins to reduce that kind of waste getting into our stream. We've also instituted, uh, we're we're looking at instituting a textile recycling program where folks can re- recycle their cloth material, their clothes, their their things of that nature that end up generally in the trash barrel. Um, so that will take a a decent amount of of tonnage out of our waste stream as well as a book recycling program where we already have the 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 textile and the book dump offs at the D P W facility for people to bring it there. I know after I say that, people are gonna say, but I can't get it in because it's closed. But when we do open back up, those two options will be available to people. So if they wanted to collect their books, their textiles, bring them to us a- and dump them off at the D P W rather than putting it in the bin and putting it cart side, uh, curb side rather. Um, that's gonna help reduce whatever tonnage we can from our waste stream, which will bring down our disposal costs. Um, you know, uh, slightly. Um, and you know, that's that's the try to cut every corner approach that you can take. Um, but I think we all know there's a there's a larger problem with with all of this. Um, and I'm pretty sure that'll come up sooner or later in this.
Yes, I'm sure we'll have many conversations down the road. And then the other thing I know that you and I spoke about recently was the fact that now that people, we don't have to have the purple bags, some people are putting loose trash in their carts. And really, in theory, they shouldn't be doing that. They should be putting their trash in a bag into the cart. Because very often, if it's windy, the the trash is blowing in the streets. And we certainly can't expect the uh the haulers to be running up and down the street, picking up all kinds of pieces of paper and whatever. Um, that it would just make their job easier and it make it more efficient and cleaner if people were to be using bags inside the carts.
Absolutely, um, regardless of whether it's a a s- city issued purple bag um or a hefty bag that you buy at Stop and Shop. Uh, everything needs to be in a bag tied and in the container curb side. Um, now, don't get me wrong, I mean, we won't be out there policing for somebody lifts the lid, throws a coffee cup in and there's one or two loose items, that's not what you're referring to. What you're referring to is the large amount of trash that people just dump in freely. And then when the cart gets dumped into the truck, it blows away, um, scatters about, and then it's it's on the street, it's it's blowing down the road. Uh, so that is important for people to to understand, and I appreciate you bringing that up, um, that even though we don't have the pay as you throw program in place any longer, it is still required that the trash is in bags. Um, I have a couple of resolutions that I want to put down to change some ordinances along tho- those lines. Um, because obviously now without the pay program, um, the ordinance reads incorrect. Um, so along that line, that is something that I'm looking to do in the future. Uh, short, near term future to try to get those that verbiage straightened out and make people aware that that has to happen.
Okay, thank you very much, and with that, I yield.
You're welcome, counselor.
Sorry about that, Counselor Lee.
How you doing, Mr. Perry?
Good, Counselor, how are you?
Good, um, I appreciate you mentioning the composting uh situation.
Absolutely, been after me for a long time for that one.
Well, if if not, i- if not for the covid nineteen situation, we were ready to have um, meetings and discussions to uh to to tackle some of these issues. But uh my goal, my my goal is not just to have a program, but to what you were talking about with Counselor Dion. Um, having something that's beneficial to the community and to the environment, but also something that is going to take the burden bu- burden off of taxpayers and people who are invested in the city. Um, one of the, one of the things that I had planned to talk to you about at at these future meetings was um, mass green communities. Have you, have you been familiar with uh mass green communities before?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I've heard of it. Um, we've done, uh, probably scratched the surface on a council, I wouldn't want to talk as though I'm an expert on it. But I know that i- it's a, it's a a program that that offers a a wide array of of ways for communities to to become, as they say, green. Um, whether it's through solar, composting, uh, and various other um, uh, pro- programs that they have, that they offer through that. And that's something we're actually looking into as we speak.
Okay, great.
Mails back and forth uh from them and for to me and and to the city planner as well. Uh, so those are some things we're looking at.
Just when we're, when we're thinking of, when we're thinking of how to pay or how this is going to be paid for, again, pe- we don't see the benefit immediately, some, we're gonna see uh some type of investment going into it. Um, and then from there, the long term is hopefully there'll be less waste, there'll be um, less, less charges on on how much our uh disposal for recycling goes and everything else. Um, but wh- with this specific program, and I'm just reading off of their uh site right now, they uh help municipalities reduce energy use and costs by implementing uh clean energy projects in municipal buildings, facilities and schools. So whatever we plan to do down the road, perhaps this is a vessel um, that we can, that we can go through to uh to work that out. Um, that's one of, that's one of the bigger things that I wanted to discuss when we had that opportunity to do so. Uh, but in the meantime, in the in the meantime, I think, um, like you just, like you stated, most of our community is not focused here right now, there's an 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 immediate crisis right now. Um, so I look forward to more of the conversations, every conversation that we've had on this topic has been valuable to me. And I'm just glad that you're um an active individual, um, and not just words, but you're actually doing the work, and I appreciate that.
Appreciate that, Counselor, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pelletier.
Thank you, John, uh, you're a busy man, I don't know how you got that suntan and a nice sunburn.
Spray on, Counselor.
Besides the point, uh, do you send up bulky items? When are you gonna go back to picking up bulky items in the city of Fall River?
Uh, Counselor, the ended to May eighteenth, so I'm gonna really try to err on the side of caution and and look at it closer to that date. And obviously, if the restrictions lighten up, um, I'd I'd love to do that. I know people are struggling with it. I I would like to thank the public though, because every call I've answered personally at the gr- at the at the office during this, when we explain to them that we aren't collecting their items, uh, and we explain why, we give them the two options that they have, which I'll say publicly here, so everybody who hasn't heard it from us will hear it. Um, A B C disposal in New Bedford and New England Recycling, N E R Recycling in Ton. Those two transfer stations are still collecting it. Now, I know not everybody has the means to get that those items to those locations and and I and I'm sorry for that. Um, but right now, my goal is to to keep not only my workforce safe, but the public. Uh, because it works both ways, right? So we allow more people from the public into our facility, they're coming into contact with our employees. Our employees are coming into contact with them, so it could go back and forth either way.
Good.
But I will say, this week currently, we have started bringing back more employees, trying to get them back in the fall. And then starting next week, my intent is to um have a much larger contingency of the workforce on shift. Um, so once we get back to that point where we have more bodies uh on shift, we should be able to start offering up more services. With just a few extra we brought back on this week, we started cutting the Broadway extension, started doing some of those areas that that are always overgrown, trying to get ahead of it um, before we have to get back to doing everything else that we do as well.
John, I told you a short answer, you know?
Hey, I didn't hear you say short answer, Counselor, but I'd like to give you detail, because you always got questions.
That's fine, now, they, some people are putting the bulky items out and they're staying there, is somebody telling them if they're going up there, telling them to put them back, how's that work?
If if they're out on the curb, um, you know, unfortunately, sometimes people call and they say it mysteriously ended up there. Um, you know, so at this point, i- it's safer to get it off the street than to argue with people. Uh, if we can clearly tell that it's come from somebody's house, that it's out in front of, we will ask them to go back and and put it in the yard. Um, minimum housing, false Fiori under Glenn Hathaway's department code enforcement has been great. While my litter enforcement officers were not on shift, on staff, uh, they were working seamlessly with us to help us with that. So we try to work with people, we try to help them when we can as well, Counselor.
All right, we we were going up the, I guess, the incinerator. Uh, Thursdays, Fridays and Saturdays and uh some of the people Fall River could drop some stuff up. Uh, is that gonna be coming up as well? Is that gonna continue?
Yeah, I think once we get back to some some more uh sense of normalcy, uh, that is something we're gonna do. And I actually have been considering, and I think this is something we will do. I I I don't want to promise it because the decision hasn't completely been made yet, but I'm I'm pretty close to 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 opening the yard back up five days a week as opposed to the three that it was cut short to. I think a lot of people miss the fact that Monday, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, they're not allowed to get in there. Um, and I think it's something we can accommodate. Um, we've gotten the staffing straightened out where we have the manpower where we need it. Uh, so I think I can afford to leave a guy or two in the yard to help with that and open the yard up. It's gonna allow the residents to come in, and it's also gonna allow us to continue to make that revenue all week as opposed to only three days a week.
Well, I I would like to see that come back as soon as possible. Now, there's a small fee when they bring stuff there, right?
Yeah, there's, there's the set fee that we always have for for items and bulkies and stuff like that.
Yeah, as lo- as lo- as long as they know it's not for free, they're gonna go and bring it down, that's it. And the other thing, I I called up, uh, I think yesterday I talked to you. And uh, you know, me and East Main Street, yeah, uh, we've done a lot of work there to try to get the situation squared away and uh I had talked to you, I say, John, what's happening on East Main Street? Oh, Leo, I'm glad you called, so why don't you give us a good news on East Main Street?
Yeah, so I know your relationship with East Main is a love hate relationship, you love the street, you love the neighborhood, you hate what's happened. Um, so the contractor is gonna start his work on May eighteenth. So in the next upcoming weeks, uh, they will be getting back to those repairs that we discussed at the council meeting, which seems so long ago at this point. Um, the intersection repairs, the centerline road repairs and the two hundred feet of um roadway that was was too thin at certain areas. So that's gonna start on May eighteenth, and honestly, Counselor, I I've seen the work that needs to be done, I've seen the company that works uh, doing it, I think they're gonna make that uh work short. Yeah, I don't think it should take that long to see those improvements.
I gotta thank you and I gotta thank the engineer. I guess it was his parting gift to me, Leo, I'm gonna straighten that East Main out and then he left, so uh, I'm looking forward to getting it done and we're gonna make sure it gets done right, but I'm I'm sure they will, so.
We will, Counselor, I promised you I'd stay on it, and I will.
Okay, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor, anything further? Any other counselors? Uh, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, so just a couple items. So first, just on the um green communities, uh, just obviously throughout a just a side of caution there, a lot of that green communities has to do with the stretch code, so that's gonna impact significantly the uh building codes and what we're enforcing, so obviously, um, we just want to make sure that we're wo- working with the building department and uh understanding um, all the uh new building codes that we're gonna have to enforce and and the implications to both the residential and commercial standpoint. And and that's a requirement, so essentially, you're you're almost a year ahead of what uh the building codes would require. So you're above and beyond uh what the current code is uh for Massachusetts at least. Uh, so that's just one piece. Uh, just turning in terms of um the financial piece for the third quarter uh reporting for um the trash portion of of this. Uh, I back in, I believe it was January or February, I I had requested to see what the numbers were for the uh pay as you throw, uh, what the tonnage is, the tonnage looked like prior to uh pay as you throw and um what it currently stands now with the elimination of the program, and I'm just still waiting for that. So if we can, if you don't have those numbers now, if you can just make sure that you send that over to me.
Yeah, I apologize, Counselor, you're right, a- and until you just said that, I had forgotten about that request and getting you that information, so I apologize for that.
No, no problem, but if
I I mean, I I can give you some rough estimates unless you want e- exact numbers. I mean, I can tell you, we've probably increased about five hundred to seven hundred ton a month um, from when pay as you throw was was in place. We've gone from about fifteen, thirteen to fifteen hundred ton a month uh collected for solid waste uh to anywhere from eighteen to twenty two hundred ton each month. We're averaging out at about twenty one hundred ton a month. So i- it's a significant increase, so five, six, seven hundred ton a month.
Okay, perfect, so so I I guess that was probably s- some of my concern. I think I think Counselor Dion actually brought this up in terms of uh, her concern that she's had as she's been driving around the city, seeing some of these uh, you know, larger uh facilities, you know, whether it's the five family or the six families, um, that have, you know, anywhere from fifteen to twenty uh toders outside, out front, um, from trash to to recyclables. Uh, and I and I just went back looking at the easy contract and and I was trying to figure out uh where exactly uh the business pickup where, uh, because I I remember especially under um, you know, the Lambent administration, we did away with picking up uh businesses, right?
That is correct, yes, on
There was a lot
administration that was eliminated.
Right, and I know there was a a some some outcry with that from from commercial uh establishments, you know, but it was also trying to mitigate the costs associated with that. But just looking at the actual easy contracts, uh, it does say that we would be picking up residential dwellings limited to either single, two, three, four, five or six families. Uh, and then in the language, it stated something along the lines that um special businesses that step forth by exhibit seven, uh, I'm sorry, exhibit H.
Correct.
Uh, so exhibit H is just recycling, uh, so the recycling program. So we we should only be picking up recycling if they've paid into the recycling program them itself, right? Like buying the toders?
When the, when the recycling um program began with the pink carts, and that's when we started getting back to it. Um, if they had purchased a pink cart, they got a trash cart. Um, so we provided both services at that point. And then once we did that, I mean, once you provide that service, it's very difficult to pull it back. Now, that's an argument we can have, I'm not an argument, I'm sorry, but a debate that we can have as to whether we do that. And I can tell you that that conversation is being had. Um, looking at the business pickup, um, what we're generating tonnage wise with the businesses and what that would remove from our waste stream is something that's absolutely being considered and and looked at. Um, so it's not something that's missed on us, um, but it was part of the contract and and, right, the wording does say recycling. Uh, but the 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 program and the fact of the matter is, in reality, uh, we have been picking up that trash since we got that business program back up and running, so.
All right, so so my my only concern as one counselor is that we've eliminated the pay as you uh, the pay as you throw program, which was obviously generating some revenue to offset the uh tonnage, right? So the disposal portion of uh the recycling piece. Uh, so generating anywhere from two point three to two point five million or depending on how um you know, how effective the program is, it what it itself was uh in terms of people following it. Uh, but now that we're starting to see, I mean, wh- would you say the recycling is is like eighty five dollars per ton, eighty six dollars per ton?
No, recycling is one thirty three, Counselor.
One one thirty three, I'm sorry.
Trash is ninety seven.
So uh, so I was completely off on that uh, that number, so it's just, it just proves my point even more that we we've got a recycling program. Um, and I think we need to kind of re- relook at it and reevaluate whether or not we want to be picking up commercial uh entities. I mean, uh, that goes for the trash as well, I mean, at a hundred and thirty, a hundred and twenty, whatever you just said for uh per ton for recycling. I mean, it just, that's a significant cost to us, um, a- and the fact that it's no longer an enterprise fund, we're not charging any any fees to deliver the service. We're we're obviously pulling uh from resources elsewhere, so I I think we really need to take a hard look at that and really look at the uh, the contract itself. And quite frankly, I'm I'm, I've said this before and I'm gonna say it again, I'm surprised that easy disposal hasn't come back uh, looking for additional monies uh in terms of the fact that we eliminated the pay as you throw program. Uh, we've got more people that are coming into the system, um, which was another number that I was, I was looking forward to see how many people actually have uh, looked to come back into the program uh as opposed to opting out of the program. Uh, because that that's gonna have a significant force, especially for them. I mean, if they're, if they're planning on, you know, a handful of vehicles to pick up the trash in the city, we've got more people coming in and they've got to utilize more of their vehicles. And I mean, obviously, that's your driving force uh for them as well from a cost standpoint. So I'm just trying to, you know, be proactive about this, to kind of uh, make sure that we're looking at this, the administration's looking at it, and as counselors, we're just asking those questions.
Yeah, I can assure you that the administration is looking at it. Um, the mayor constantly asks me, you know, what are we doing, how are we gonna save money on trash? And we gotta figure this out, and I understand it's not an easy question. But as I said to Counselor Dion earlier, you know, there there there's another piece to this that, you know, wasn't discussed at that moment, but I said we eventually would, and and you brought it up, Counselor. When you remove a two point one, two point three million dollar revenue generating source, we can cut every corner we can, we can eliminate business recycling, we can, you know, create a compost location within the city that we can bring our stuff to. Um, but the loss of that revenue i- it stings, and it's going to sting for quite some time. Um, between disposal cost and the lost revenue, you can probably figure about four million dollars a year. And then you you project that out over ten years, and that would be forty million dollars that the city is going to have to find a way to come up with and or pay um, because of the lost revenue and increased disposal cost, and that's the elephant in the room. Um, so until we figure out an effective way to recoup that um, or some other creative way that we can generate revenue, um, we're going to be having this conversation, unfortunately, as I've had for the last ten, fifteen years. What are we gonna do about trash? Um, so I think you're obviously right on it, you're spot on, I will get you the numbers you needed. Um, and yeah, I appreciate the comments. Uh, on the green communities piece, the and and Counselor Lee, I would have gotten into this with you when we had our meeting, and you just brought up the green community, so along the lines of what Counselor Kadim had said, it's a very stringent program. Uh, there are a lot of requirements that lead us to have to do certain things um, that are gonna make it very difficult for us to always be in compliance. Um, and I'm not sure we'd be able to follow all of the programs, but there are certain avenues that they have that I think we could take advantage of. Maybe not all of their programs, um, but you know, enough to where we could prob- possibly get that designation. But again, that's something we'd have to vet out before we did, made that decision.
Yeah, listen, I I for one love to to see that, I I support uh Counselor Lee on that, that whole effort, you know, and and I think that's something we definitely need to look at, but I, but I agree with you. I mean, we gotta start looking at all our vehicles, make sure that they're energy efficient, and I I know some of them are exempt, uh, police vehicles, uh, you know, first responding vehicles, things of that nature. But the biggest piece, which really has an impact to the residents, is is really the building, the bu- building code itself and the stretch code.
Absolutely, right.
And making sure that we're meeting that as well, so.
Yep.
With that, Mr. President, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, Counselor Lee.
Uh, Counselor Kadim, as usual, brings up something that reminded me of something I needed to ask you as well. Um, when you're breaking down the tonnage, do you, do you have it at, do you have it as residential, commercial and government, or do you have it just all in one, one pile? Or is it?
Yeah, so the the one stream that you can really break out, um, well, more than one, but the 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 one that that sticks out would be the schools. Okay, so the schools are easy, because we can easily identify a separate truck goes and gets those. Uh, but when it gets down to businesses, take South Main Street, for instance, the same truck runs up South Main Street, picks up the trash at JJ's Hot Dogs and and the tenement houses between JJ's and the Clipper. So that same truck sweeping that street all at once. So it's impossible to designate. What we can do is look at the number of tots that the businesses in exhibit H have. And there's a formula that you use. Each cart can hold a specific amount of trash. That trash averages out at a certain weight and you can get some rough estimates as to what your tonnage is for those businesses. So that would be the process to try to figure that out.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dion.
In terms of the solid waste, um, essentially we pick up residential trash, correct?
Correct.
So what's, what differentiates residential and commercial when it comes to someone, say, that owns multi, multi-families? Are those considered residential? Is that considered commercial? Like in other words, I could live in Providence, own ten six families in Fall River, and are those considered residential or commercial?
Anything six family or under is considered residential, Counselor. Six families or above six family is, is a commercial building. So that would be something that would require a dumpster or private pickup. Six, six units or less, we, we are required to pick that up by ordinance.
So I theoretically could not live in Fall River, own a hundred and twenty units and have the tax money pick up my trash?
Yes. And, and I'm not going to point out a specific address or a specific name, but I, I believe maybe the question generated from you and one of the other counselors about a, a, a few properties recently, all owned by the same individual, all in the same stretch of land on one street. And then when he puts out all of those, those carts, it kind of lines up and almost looks like a really, really long stretch for one house. But it's not. It's a grouping of, of houses. So they're all individually owned. And although you're, you're right, the total numbers, if I own ten houses that were all eight families, then that's eighty units. But they're all individually owned and, and, and delineated. So they're all individual properties. So as long as they fall within that, I, I have to look at them as residential.
So theoretically, that could represent a lot of tonnage and a significant amount of money.
That is correct. You know, so I mean, if you wanted to perhaps put a resolution in to look at something like that, maybe putting an ordinance in that states if any one person owns a specific number of, of properties and parcels with a specific number of units, they have to look at disposing of that trash a different way. I mean, that's a discussion. But as of right now, I have no power to force anybody who's six family or under to get a private hauler to take their trash. I just can't do it. I don't have the authority.
I don't think the, the, the issue so much is the, the, the one, the one residential six family or less. And I don't have issue with owner occupied either. But, but I do thank you. And yes, I think perhaps down the road, we do need to start having some tough discussions. Again, to do what's best and, and do what's best for the taxpayers of the city. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor Pereira.
I think that we really need to have a discussion one night just about what we're going to do with trash. You can't take away a hundred and twenty dollar a year fee and then take away bags and think that you're not going to be headed for a disaster. John, right now, what are we paying now for, for recyclables and for trash? What's the rate now?
Ninety-seven dollars for solid waste, the trash, and one thirty-three for recycling, Counselor.
And do you see that going up?
It's, it's kind of been steady recently. We do have an increase coming up in September through the Republic Transfer Station contract that we have. It's going to go from ninety-seven to one oh four. And then the recycling, we're actually in talks with the recycle hauler that we have now. His contract expires in July. I actually had a discussion with him today. We're going to be sitting down in the next week or two to try to iron out a new contract. And I did express to him, I did express to him the importance of, of us looking to save some funds. And whether that means he needs to really, really look for every outlet that's possible and shop around for our best price that he can give us. Then that's something he needs to do, but we need to find a way to, to save money on recycling. I stressed that to him today, and that's the conversations that we're going to be having in the next week or two.
So is it that June thirtieth, that contract ends and we get a new contract July one?
Correct.
But we're going to have to know what that contract is.
That's right.
Before the budget for the next year.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I mean, how naive to think that we're going to remove that much money, just the bags were what, two point five? Remove that. And think, and then when we didn't have bags, we had trash from all over, from Somerset, Swansea, Tiverton, because they have to pay for bags, they bring it to Fall River. There was a larger tonnage dropped off in the north end then, and now we have it too in the south end, coming in from Tiverton. And I will tell you, I personally, as a taxpayer in this community, as we all are, I'm infuriated that when the Purple Bag Program ended, that they weren't given three months' notice. So we are stuck with many, many, many cases of bags that we're paying to store on Seaberry Street, which is another thing. Why are we paying for storage on Seaberry Street? What does that cost us a month?
So that, that is twenty-three hundred a month, Counselor, for that space. It's, it's a significant amount of square footage. We don't lease it specifically for the bags. The bags were something that were stored there because we had the room. We store our carts there. We store any of the surplus, more delicate items that we can't keep outside or in the garage. And we, you know, looking into some preliminary numbers about the space building that we spoke about, it's anywhere from one twenty-five to one fifty, a hundred and twenty-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand to get a hundred by forty foot space building constructed at DPW. That, that's soup to nuts. So that would be the, the erection of it, the power, you know, lighting, all of the things that you'd need to have a function garage like that. But right now, that's where we're at. We just don't have the room for everything we, we have, to be honest with you.
And what are we going to do with those bags? Does anybody have any ideas?
Well, the mayor's thrown a lot of ideas out there. We've looked at, and I believe you were going to reach out to some of your contacts at the courthouse, see if possibly, you know, the prison details that, you know, clean along the side of the highways. We've looked at possibly seeing if the school department would be interested, using them in our municipal buildings if possible. And, and using them on our general cleanup, citywide cleanups, neighborhood cleanups, things like that. I'm going to just be honest with you, Counselor. They've really been sitting there that, that long because they're radioactive in this community. They really are. And I don't mean literally radioactive like Chernobyl. But you, you see a bag, you mention the purple bags, you talk about the purple bags and, and things just kind of get heated. So now that they've cooled down, I think we really have to explore some avenues to try to get rid of them. Over time, I, I, I think we're going to use them all. But the ninety day clause from the contract with Waste Zero was going to leave us with a specific number of bags. Probably not the number we have in storage now. But it still would have been a significant amount because once the program was announced that it was being canceled, I doubt there were going to be many citizens that were going to use up their last three or four bags and then go out and buy another roll for this month when they know the program was ending. So unfortunately, we, we were all put in a situation where the program was, was missold. And, and we were left holding the bag and now we're cleaning up that mess.
John, you and I have worked together for many, many years. This was nothing more than a Jaisal Khair political ploy. And for him to get away with this is heartbreaking because it's not only the three month supply that we had to buy, but then so that the citizens didn't see it, they hired the bag company to go around and collect the bags from Stop and Shop and Shores and Amaro Central Market and every other bloody place and paid them to store it and everything else for ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and some odd dollars, almost a hundred thousand dollars. And we're storing it in a building that we're paying twenty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars a year when we could put up a building and, and take care of it ourselves and not have to pay the addition. And they had made mention of maybe the sheriff's department wants to buy bags. Knowing Tom Hodgson the way I do, I don't think he would want the inmates using bags that said city of Fall River. Bristol County Sheriff's Department, maybe not city of Fall River. And then there was talk about, well, we can sell them to the citizens. Sell them to the citizens. The citizens already paid for them. So now we're going to sell them? That's a slap in the face to the citizens of Fall River. And how that was done, in my opinion, was criminal to do that way. People get aggravated. I know I do. It really bothers me. But I will tell you, John, on, on another note, you and I have talked about the DPW garage, how that needs to be cleaned up, that, that needs to look like a municipal building. It doesn't. It looks like a dump yard. And part of it is that we don't invest money into the department for you to be able to do the things that need to be done there. And everything is kind of piecemeal. I mean, how much is it going to cost for us to knock down those incinerators? Is it that somebody will come and knock it down and they will take the metal and steel and call it a wash? Or, or charge us less? Maybe we need to look into that. Maybe we need to look at getting a contractor to come in and paving the asphalt there. Maybe we can get the sheriff's department to have guys come in to paint the outside of the building. You know, things have to be done. But I'm not one that's afraid to talk about purple bags. I'm not one that's afraid to talk about the hundred and twenty dollar fee. You need to figure out what we're going to do with our trash. And unfortunately, it costs money to get rid of trash. If we're going to be paying a hundred and four a ton and one thirty-three a ton for the trash and for recyclables, in the amount of tonnage that we get on a monthly basis, you're talking a big chunk of change. And we have to get rid of our trash. We know that. And to get vehicles that are energy efficient, to do composting, that's all great things, but that's not something we're going to be able to do tomorrow to be able to get money for next year's budget. And I would refer to Mrs. Sahadi, that would not, you know, wash the cost of that. Doing that. I mean, it's great ideas and we need to move on them, but it's not.
As I said earlier, we can look at every cost cutting measure, but with the loss of that revenue, we're really stuck behind the eight ball. We can reduce everything to the minimum that we can. And unfortunately, especially now, Counselor, as you said, nothing is going to be overnight. Whatever programs we try to enforce or put in place, whatever changes we try to make, it's going to take time for us to realize those results. Number one. And number two, I'd love to talk about investing in the DPW facility in Lewiston Street and getting up a space building. And you know what? Three months ago, two and a half months ago, we were on the right track and thinking like that. Once this pandemic broke and we've seen what financially this has done to all of the communities, where are we going to be at the end of this? So I love to talk about trying to get it done. But honestly, I'm curious to see how big of a slice of the pie is going to be left for a facility that, quite honestly, and I take this piece personally, I do. I try not to take anything personally, but this I do. For a facility that honestly has been forgotten for the last fifteen to twenty years. Once the doors of the incinerator were shuttered, that facility closed down. There's been nearly zero investment in that facility to keep it as a professional facility. I don't like the way it looks. I want it to be a professional facility. I want the public to be able to come in and be comfortable when they're there and have it more organized. But unless we're given the tools to make that happen, Counselor, it's going to be what it's going to be. And it's going to stay the way it is until there's a significant investment in that facility. And with this, with this pandemic and the financial mess we're going to be in at the end of it, I, I'm not confident that, that it's, it's going to be able to be done. That, 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 that bothers me. But it's the reality of the situation.
No, I agree, John. And it bothers me because for years and years and years, I've always been fighting for that building to be better, for more to happen there, for the trash and the junk that's in the back to get out of there, to clean that up. So hopefully, that's something that this administration and this council can work together at doing because it does need to be addressed. And you're just putting money from every department and then say, oh, we've, you know, we've got eight million dollars in, in free cash. Well, at what cost? At the cost of things in the city not getting fixed the way they should and not continue to be maintained. So there's my rant for the evening and I thank you very much. Mr. Perry?
You're welcome. Thank you, Counselor.
Appreciate it. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further from the council on this? Very none. All right. Thank you, Mr. Perry. I appreciate you joining us this evening.
Counselors, it's been real. Enjoy the rest of your night. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is transfers and appropriations, item four and five on full council. Mayor, an order appropriating forty thousand, one fifty-five from CPA Undesignated Fund to the CPA Historic Resources Preservation Project, Little Theater. I will tell you that I did have a conversation today with Mr. Souza, and he did remind me, have my notes here, that the appropriation of the forty thousand, one fifty-five was voted on because when Little Theater's FY twenty project began their work, it was found that as the hazardous material was being removed, portions of the HVAC system was also contaminated and it would have been removed because of it. So a new code compliant HVAC system was recommended to be installed for the building because of this. So this is why Little Theater came back to CPC for additional funds. Mrs. Sahadi, can you elaborate any more on, on that? Or is?
No, no, Council President. I also spoke with Mr. Souzer and he gave me the same explanation as to the need, the emergency need for the additional forty thousand dollars for the Little Theater. And the CPC has voted it and they're just looking for your support.
All right. Any further questions on item four regarding CPA, CPC? Very none. Okay, thank you. Item five, the appropriate, order appropriating one point two million dollars from the state county assessments to the school appropriation. Mrs. Sahadi, I know you and I have had numerous conversations regarding this specifically as DESC has required that this one point two plus be moved over from the, from the city side to the school department side in terms of balancing of budgets. And I'm sure the council will ask this question, so I'll be a little proactive. I know there's additional funds that need to be moved over to the city side as well. Where are we at? I mean, to the school side as well. Where are we at with net school spending? Where are we at for that appropriation? Because I know we've had lots of conversations about that.
Certainly. So the letter from DESC, and I think Mr. Pacheco may be on the phone as well. I don't know whether Kevin is. But DESC sent a letter the beginning of two thousand twenty after the recap and after the cherry sheet was submitted and approved by the conference committee. And so at that particular time, if you look at the analysis that I provided to all the counselors, there was a significant amount of charter school assessment that had to do with the enrollment. The enrollment numbers have changed significantly and therefore the assessment for charter school had decreased. As a result of it decreasing and as a result of the city funding net school spending at just one hundred percent, that, those additional dollars needed to be transferred over to the school department. So it's no effect, total effect on the bottom line of the city budget because we're moving it from one line item to another. But we're trying, what we're trying to do is make whole the school department as it relates to the amount in the assessment. If you notice on the analysis, Mr. Almeida and I had a long conversation about it. He had indicated to me that he thought I should hold back a few dollars on that assessment until the final enrollment numbers come in. So if you look at the analysis, in fact, based on the recap or the numbers that came out of conference committee back last summer and what is looking, what is on the DESC analysis, it looks like we're going to owe them one point three. the DESE analysis, it looks like we're going to owe them 1.3, um, million dollars. Um, and we're only transferring 1.2 at this particular point. So at the end of the year, if the enrollment stays consistent with what was reported in January, then we will owe them another $100,000 or so, um, from the assessment. And as you know, we track health insurance on a regular basis, so there may be some additional monies that will be required to transfer to, um, the school department. But at this particular point, it's too early to tell. Um, again, everything is so different this, this spring, if you will, with the pandemic. Um, health insurance in, in a lot of ways is actually down from where it's been in the last several years as a result of no elective surgeries, um, no doctor's visits. Um, so we're still waiting to see what the next month or two, um, results are when we're looking at the health insurance. So it's very possible, um, in order to meet net school spending, um, when we, or when Mr. Almeida files the end of the year report, we will also owe them some additional health insurance dollars.
Uh, Mr. Pacheco, I know you're here. Uh, you want to elaborate a little bit more on that? Um, or, um, was that enough said there? And I, we need to unmute you. Let's do that right now.
Hold on a second. Let me.
You're all set. You're all set. You're all set.
Um, I, I think what, um, Mrs. Sahadi has said is spot on and, um, and the conversation that was had between, uh, Mr. Almeida and Mrs. Sahadi, um, you know, self-explanatory. So, um, we agree with, um, with those comments.
Very good. Uh, and I know it's not on our agenda tonight, but we soon should be having a discussion on the transportation money that was not used this fiscal year in terms of what the city is going to be doing with that. I know the administration's working on that, but it's excess of the millions of dollars for transportation line items that weren't spent because we weren't transporting our children to school and the transportation companies actually laid off most, if not all of their employees. So I'm sure we're going to be having that discussion in the future as well, uh, in this fiscal year if there's going to be transfers coming down. Uh, any other further questions from the council on this, uh, on this item specifically? Counselor Kadim?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just, I guess I'm a little confused. I, I heard the explanation and I'm just, and I apologize. I've been having a long day and just not fucking. Um, so in terms of the 1.2 million dollars that you're saying that we've got a, that seems like it's a journal entry or a bookkeeping, um, transaction that's going to be taking place. When we put together a budget, a budget, we take into account all of the state aid that comes in. We look at the cherry sheets. We, um, exclude any charge offs that we would possibly get. And then that comes up with the revenue that we're going to have in anticipation of a budget. So are you saying between the time that we voted on the budget and the time that the tax recap, uh, was being approved, that there was 1.2 million dollars that came in for additional revenue?
Uh, no. No. What, what really happened is actually not even when you, when you pass the budget. As you know, by the time it comes out, out of conference, you've already passed your budget. When we did the recap, the assessment for, um, charter school, so the assessment portion of it, not the revenue end of it, the assessment portion of it, um, was 24.6 million. When the enrollment came in from the charter school and the assessment got adjusted, it got adjusted down to 23 million. And so 1.4 million dollars got adjusted through, um, the charter school assessment, 108,000 was an increase in the school choice assessment. And then there was a small $8,000 adjustment in the special ed number. So the total adjustment between what was on the final cherry sheet, um, and what came through on the DESE, um, reporting that was done in February of 2020 was a 1.4 million dollar difference, or 1.3 million dollar rather difference.
So but where's, so where's that money coming from? That's, I guess that's what I'm saying. So if, if it was, if we had, if we just, just so I can, I'm just trying to think out loud here. I apologize. But so it, so if we, if we're going through this, this process and we have it, so whatever we didn't kick over to the schools would mean that that revenue is being used on the, on the city side, right? So if we've got the adjustments and we're now saying that we're shorting, uh, the schools by 1.2 million dollars or, or more for, for net school spending and we, and we shift over and appropriate monies to the schools, where is that coming from? We got to take it first.
It's coming from the appropriation for assessments.
Right. So, but I, so I get that, but I, I, didn't you already take that into account for revenues coming into the city? So wouldn't you then be suggesting that we're 1.2 million dollars short on revenue on the city side?
No. So, so I'm talking about just the, the municipal assessments. And I know it's, it's a long day for everyone. So not the revenue aspect of the cherry sheet, the assessment aspect of the cherry sheet. So.
The second, the second page, right? So you.
Second page, right? Page two.
So, but I guess when you, when you take, when you take all that out, you're netting, you're netting out your, what your revenue is going to be.
Right. But we're showing on the budget, we're showing, we gross up the revenue and, and you appropriate the expenditure. So in the appropriations, you appropriate the municipal, um, assessments. So you appropriate, you know, all of the assessments, the, um, transit authority assessments, the, um, um, parking surcharge assessments, you, you do the regional transit, um, I said that one, I'm sorry, um, the mosquito control. So you do all of them. So the assessment in, in the budget was somewhere around 28 million dollars. The biggest chunk of that is the charter school. So basically what we would have, if everything else was equal and let's just say we were well above net school spending, which of course, as you know, we're not, but if we were, we would actually have a turnback in the assessment line item this year.
Okay. All right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I think I follow that. All right. I yield. Thank you.
Counselor, any further questions on this, on this item? Harry, none.
Can I just, I'm, I'm sorry. Can I just, can I just ask, um, Mayor, if you don't mind, if my, just my own company, could you send me the, uh, and I, I could look it up, but can you send me the cherry sheet on that?
Of us. Yep.
Just the analysis and what we voted on.
Been in, I'm not sure if, um, the city council put it in the package, but I think I did an analysis so that you could actually see what was on the original cherry sheet, but I can actually attach the cherry sheet for you as well.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, counselor. Thank you, Mrs. Sahadi. Uh, Harry, no further discussions for, uh, the committee on finances. There are motions to adjourn finance. Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. Madam Clerk, do we need a roll call on adjournment? You have to unmute yourself, Madam Clerk. Try it now. Can't hear you.
Oh, no.
Yes.
We did the roll call. I've done a roll and pass. So yes, I would.
Motion, motion has been made and seconded roll call on adjournment.
Motion to adjourn, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby? La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Ferreira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. Uh, motion, uh, the city council committee on finance is now adjourned. We're going to go right into our, um, city council regular meeting, um, right now. Um, so the city, former city council meeting will now come to order, Madam Clerk.
It's on.
It's on, Madam Clerk. It's not on anymore.
No.
Yep.
Kadim?
Yeah.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby? La Libby LeBeau?
Here.
Lee?
Yeah.
Peckham?
Yeah.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Ferreira?
Yeah.
Here. Uh, before we all stand, we do have the flag, but I'd love to take this moment, um, before we do our moment of silence, um, which we'll do first, uh, to dedicate this moment of silence to former city counselor, Tom Kozak, um, who served as a member of the city council from 1996 through 2008. Um, I know, um, both Counselor Kilby and Counselor Ferreira, uh, as well as our clerks, um, both had an opportunity to work with, uh, Counselor Kozak. So our prayers go to him and his family. Also at this time, um, all of us, if you can please, uh, keep in mind the families that have been impacted in the deaths, uh, here in Fall River and throughout the Commonwealth, um, COVID-19. So if you can please, just, uh, for a moment, we'll do a. Thank you very much and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And one individual. In addition to that, um, I know I mentioned that, um, Mr. Counselor Kozak, um, also served with Counselor Pelletier as well. Um, so there's a couple of counselors who had the opportunity to serve, um, with, uh, Mr. Kozak. So, uh, keep him and his family and your thoughts as we go through this. Uh, pursuant to the open meeting, Laura, any person may make an audio or video recording of this meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. And I didn't know where.
The first item before you is the appointment of Ian Shackney as treasurer.
Is there a motion?
Second.
All right. All counselors, I'm going to unmute all counselors right now. Um, um, I'm going to mute Mr. Pacheco, but all counselors are unmuted because we need everybody to be unmuted. Um, Counselor Pelletier, I'm going to unmute you so you don't have to unmute yourself. Actually, I can't because you muted yourself. So Counselor Pelletier, if you can unmute yourself, that'd be great. I'll call your daughter to help you. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Lee, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Ferreira, dis, uh, discussion on the item. Counselor Ferreira.
Quick comment, please.
Yep. Counselor Ferreira, first followed by Counselor Kilby.
I'm, I'm going to support this. However, I must say that I think a city our size, we should have a treasurer and a collector. I understand we're in a tough financial crisis and there are communities that do have collected treasurers. But I think it works in a town. It works, you know, in some smaller areas, but with our population, I would hope that we would eventually be able to, um, get a treasurer and a collector. Um, but I think with some mentoring, I, I think that, uh, Mr. Shackney, uh, will do as well. I just would prefer that we have two positions to be honest. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kilby?
Yep. Just quickly, um, I, I have the utmost respect for, um, for Ian and, um, his capabilities. I know firsthand, I know Sean, I think Sean might have worked with him or maybe that was subsequent to Sean, but, uh, I did work with him close to a year. Um, his skills are impeccable. Uh, but to Linda's point, yes, I, I think eventually we're going to look, uh, with the, the city decides to go that route, but, um, I, I, I have so much confidence in, um, in Ian Shackney that, uh, we're going to be okay. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Dion.
Yeah, I have just, uh, two questions for, uh, Mrs. Sahadi. Um, number one would be, is there any, um, chance of being a conflict, being a collector and a treasurer would be the first question. And secondly, what type of oversight is there, um, having somebody doing two positions at once?
Certainly, Counselor.
If you want to waive the rules, Counsel President?
Thank you. Motion to waive the rules has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Ferreira. Roll call on waiving the rules.
On waiving the rules, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Ferreira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
With a lot of debt service and as you know, um, we have a lot of, um, mass clean water debt that is significant that will need some, um, mentoring to get him started, but, um, I'm certainly able to help him with that.
And then just in terms of, I know we had, uh, for a number of years, had issues with reconciliation of cash and, you know, cash flows. Um, so obviously we have an assistant treasurer who's probably very familiar with that, um, and would be able to kind of off, offset that at least for the transition period, I'm assuming. So does he have a good handle in terms of that stuff, the cash reconciliation and the cash flow?
On the cash flow side, um, certainly there are no issues at the moment and that is also true with regard to, um, the reconciliation. Cause as you know, we both go way back when the reconciliations weren't being done and it took a long time to get them up to speed. But, um, the reconciliations are being done. Um, quite honestly, um, Ms. Perry has, um, a laptop at home and she's been keeping up with all the reconciliations, um, since they've been working on a very skeleton crew. Um, but both of, or all three of the clerks have been, um, taking turns and coming in and getting their accounts reconciled. So on, um, the treasurer side, all of the work is really being kept up to date, even though they've been working on either remotely or, you know, on a skeleton type crew. On the collector's side, the same is true. I know there was a question earlier with regard to the Dropbox and, and the bank that is going to be assisting us in collecting cash. But, um, Mr. Shackley has done a great job with regard to, um, um, the collections, whether they be the remote collection, the online collections, the individuals who are coming in, dropping their checks in the Dropbox. Um, the only downfall, if you will, is those that would have paid in cash, but a lot of those have learned to use, um, either a, um, um, money order and put it in the Dropbox. Um, I actually brought some, some checks in a few days in a row where people were standing outside thinking they could come into the building. Um, to answer the question though, earlier, um, I think that Counselor Ferreira asked the state law was that the only extension of time, um, for, that, that a municipality could extend was real estate taxes and personal property taxes. So water bills, sewer bills and excise tax bills were not extended. Now, the mayor did in an executive order, um, waive the interest. So if your bill was due between March 10th and just in June 30th, and you paid your bill by June 30th, any interest that would have accrued because your payment was late is going to be waived, but it has to be paid by June 30th in order for it to be waived.
Okay. I, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Harry, none. Roll call. Madam Clerk.
On confirmation of the appointment, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Ferreira? And President Ponti? The second item before you is a communication from the mayor and an order for a utility easement for the wastewater treatment plant.
Uh, it'd be appropriate to accept the mayor's letter and adopt the order. It's appropriate.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to accept the mayor's letter and adopt the order has been made by Counselor Ferreira, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, I believe. I heard any discussion on the item? Roll call, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, we can't hear you.
Counselors Kadim?
Yeah.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier? Herrera? President Ponti? Have the mayor's executive order?
Appropriate to accept and place on file.
Motion so made.
Accept and place this item on file regarding the extension of real estate taxes and personal property taxes due to the waiver of certain interests and penalties has been made by Consul Kilby, seconded by Consul of Deion. Discussion. Roll call.
On acceptance and placement on file, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalabie LaBeau? Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
President Ponti? Item number four is a communication from the mayor and an order appropriating forty thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars from the CPA Undesignated Fund to the CPA Historic Resources Preservation Projects for the Little Theater of Fall River.
Motion to adopt the order. Second, motion to accept the letter and adopt the order has been made by Consul Kilby, seconded by Consul deion. Discussion on the item. Roll call. Madam Clerk, can't hear you.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby? Lalabie LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number five is a mayor's communication and an order appropriating one million, two hundred thousand dollars from the state and county assessments to the school appropriation.
Motion to accept the mayor's letter and adopt the order has been made by Consul of Herrera. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Consul Lee. Discussion. Roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalabie LaBeau?
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number six is a mayor's communication in order to transfer rights of interest in a vehicular bridge on Weaver Street to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts through Mass DOT.
Motion to accept the mayor's communication letter and adopt the order has been made by Consul of Herrera. Is there a second? Seconded by Consul Lee. Discussion. Consul deion.
Yeah, my only question would be, are there any ramifications in doing this, you know? Obviously, the, you know, with the purpose of transferring ownership and right. I don't know.
I mean, Consul, I mean, it's. You feel that you want to refer it to committee, the appropriate committee would be the Real Estate Committee, just to avoid there being any unsure questions. We've been down these roads before. I got you, Consul of Herrera next, but we've been down these roads before. There's uncertainty. We had an easement issue many years ago, or not many, a couple of years ago. And if there's concerns, you can bet it.
Motion to refer to real estate, mate?
Second. Before we recognize the referral, I'd like to recognize, Consul deion, do you have any other points that you'd like to make before I recognize Consul of Herrera?
Oh, I think partly my question is also because we have, you know, residential units on the other side of that, many businesses on the other side of that. And just to make sure nobody or nothing is gonna be affected in any negative way.
Valid.
With that, I yield.
Thank you. Consul of Herrera?
I think Consul Dion brings up some good points. However, Mass DOT has been the ones that have repaired that bridge, maintained that bridge. And now with having that medical marijuana or whatever, recreational marijuana facility there with more traffic and more cars and where the trust company is, pine, odd pines, they're gonna be building another housing, another big housing building back there as well that you want to make sure that that bridge going over on Weaver Street is well-maintained. And obviously, the state has more dollars to fix that and maintain that, and they have been doing it for all these years, even though the city owned it. So they're basically saying that they want ownership of it because they've been fixing it. That's the information I got when I talked to the state, so I would agree to let them have it if they're gonna be maintaining it. Actually, I didn't want to cut a deal with them that we'll give you the bridge and the land that's on the side of Weaver Street, that we can take that so that people there, residents there, in that, you know, it's a multifamily house there, that they have a place to park. And the mayor said, I don't know if I can make a deal with the state, but he, he's gonna be looking into it as well. It would help the people in the Weaver Street, North Main Street area. But that's just a little bit of insight, because I think the questions asked by my colleague, Consul Dion, were, you know, appropriate. I mean, there's other people there, but I think this will benefit all of the residents there. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Consul Peckham?
Disregard, Mr. President, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Consul Lee?
I don't oppose if Consul deion wants to bring it to committee. But I too, I've been reading over, I read over this a few times, and it just seemed like Consul of Herrera said beneficial. You have snow and ice control, maintenance of lighting, any other kind of maintenance, rails, fences, pavements, things like that. That's gonna save us some costs on the municipal level, so I'm not opposed if Consul deion feels strongly about it of bringing it to committee. But otherwise, I'm good with this as well. I yield.
Anything further? Consul Kilby, do you have a motion to refer to real estate?
Yes, I, you know, I put the motion in because I respect my colleague, who used to be to my right. But if she wants to vet this out a little bit more, that's fine, but I know I've done my research on it, so I'm happy with passing this through. But I'll, I'm happy to entertain, you know, further discussion if it's necessary.
Sure. Consul deion?
Yeah, no, I mean, if people feel comfortable with it, I just said, you know, like you just discussed, in the past, there have been issues. And I just want to make sure that, I mean, granted, obviously, the cost savings, the fact that they would be doing the maintenance, that's, those are all great things. I just wanted to make sure that there's nothing hidden, nothing that we would basically kind of kick ourselves down the road. So if everybody's confident that it's the right thing to do, I'm good with that.
All right, fair enough. Hearing no motion to refer to the Real Estate Committee, there's a motion that's been made to accept the mayor's communication and adopt the order that has been made and seconded. No further discussion. Roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalabie LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Herrera? And President Ponti? Item number seven is a communication from the mayor and a request to include the former Adams House located at eleven sixty-eight Highland Avenue to the downtown HD Zone.
This would be a referral most likely to the planning board, folks. That's the appropriate venue for something like this, right, Madam Clerk?
Exactly.
Motion to refer to planning?
Motion to refer to the planning board has been made by Consul Kilby, seconded by Consul Peckham. Discussion. Roll call.
A referral to the planning board, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalabie LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Same.
Item number eight is a communication from the mayor in two orders. The first is for a power purchase agreement. And the second being for a pilot and lease agreement for the use of the roof of the Durfee Fieldhouse.
Appropriate if it's the will of the council to accept the communication and adopt both A and B.
Motion still made, Mr. President?
Motion to accept the mayor's communication and adopt items A and B has been made by Consul Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Consul deion. Discussion. Roll call. Consul Pelletier, do you have a question?
No, I had put it in my hand.
Okay, Consul Pelletier, you good? Do you have a question?
Yeah, is this gonna cost the city any money or what?
Mister Pacheco is here. It's the Durfee project. We can waive the rules and ask Mister Pacheco to speak on this. Is there a motion to waive the rules?
Make a motion to waive the rules.
By Consul of Herrera, seconded by Consul deion. Roll call on waiving the rules.
On waiving the rules, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalabie LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Herrera? And President Ponti?
Mister Pacheco, let me just unmute you for a moment. All right, go ahead, Mister Pacheco.
Counselor, there is no cost to the school department, nor the city. It is a power purchase agreement, which means we are leasing the roof to the company. They will put the solar panels on. They are guaranteeing us a rate for the next twenty years for electricity price. And that's the nature of the entire agreement. There is also coming up a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes on that particular array that will be paid to the city to use that roof.
So we'll be making money on.
You'll be making money on, right, you'll be making money from the company, a small amount of money each year as a payment for the rental, so to speak, or the lease of the roof. And the school department will have electricity about ten or eleven cents kilowatt hour for the duration of the contract, which is twenty years.
What kind of money you talk, talking about saving, you know?
It'll be in excess of ballpark, probably three hundred thousand.
A year?
No, 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 overall. It's only on that building, so it's not, it's not a power purchase agreement across the district. It's only for the kilowatt hours that we use at Durfee High School.
All right, you know, I just don't wanna keep spending money to, you know, a power purchase agreement. It's an agreement. And it seems to be all right. You're gonna make a little bit of money, and you'll save a little bit of money on electric, so I have no problem with that. Thank you very much. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Consul Kilby?
Yes. Mister Pacheco, is any benefit gonna go to the high school, the new high school? I live there, by there, and the only reason I say that is because I drive by every day, and I see the beautiful structure that's going up and the size of the structure. So what benefit is the school itself gonna get, Kenny, from, is our electric cost gonna be taken care of within that school?
Yeah, so it won't be, it won't, the electricity won't be free. It'll be ten cents kilowatt hour as opposed to fourteen, fifteen cent kilowatt hour that we're currently paying at that site. So the difference will be three or four cents, which will accumulate rather quickly on the usage of that high school alone. Again, so if we were doing it on the old high school, there's much, there is a much larger capacity or usage of electricity. The new high school is much more efficient, and those numbers went down as far as usage goes, which is why we're talking about three, three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand.
Forgive me, but the three hundred grand is through the life of the twenty years?
It's over the twenty years of what we're going to be saving with that small amount of use. It's only the size of, so the solar array is on rooftop of the fieldhouse only. The other roof has some shading issues with the design of the building and the amount of equipment that's up on the roof, the air handlers, different venting patches and different things like that. The other roof is not as advantageous for solar.
Did it have to go to?
So the roof.
Did it have to go up to bid, Ken?
It's, no, it, the process for the solar piece was done through a utility company.
So the space, it's space, so it didn't know, it didn't have to go off the bid process?
Yes.
It did not?
It did not.
It did not have to?
Did not have to, no.
Okay, thank you, Ken. I yield.
Thank you, Consul of Herrera.
Ken, what do you think the usage of electricity is gonna be at the new high school, you know, monthly or yearly?
Well, currently, currently, we're using seventy-five thousand dollars a month in electricity.
So will this be cut down?
No, it will be fifty percent of that or better.
That we'll be paying?
Yeah, less, fifty percent less. So the electricity usage on the new building, the equipment is much more efficient, the size of the equipment, the efficiency of the equipment is much different on the new school as it was on the old school. The square footage is not much different. The new building is five hundred and one thousand square feet along with the fieldhouse, and the old building was five hundred and forty thousand.
Okay, it saves us money. I know I have solar panels due. Does this company own the panels? If something, a panel breaks, they're responsible for repairing it?
So the, that's why there's no cost to the city, so this system is probably worth a million dollars or more to purchase and install. There is no cost to the city for either, but the ownership and the maintenance and also, you know, the the S-Rex belong to the company who's putting it up on the roof. The city will not share in any of those costs, both on the good side and on the bad side. What we will get is that cheaper electricity guaranteed for the twenty years and the small pilot, which is one of the other items for tonight's, via discussion.
I think that any building that we put up or any place that we can put, you know, some kind of green energy just makes a lot of sense. But I am concerned that this wasn't something that did go out for bid to see if there's other companies out there that would give us more bang for our buck. Why do you think that wasn't done?
So it's not part of the project, it's on the outside. There's a few companies, Sollect is one of the largest
Right.
companies that does this kind of work, especially in Massachusetts. The reputation was very good. They've come highly recommended from some of the major suppliers of electricity, and they are building a couple of solar fields as we speak now in Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
I have one more quick question.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor. Consul Kilby?
Yeah, very quick. I know we're starting nine o'clock. Speak to the pilot payment in lieu of taxes. What's the benefit that we're gonna get from that? It's, there's a schedule inside there. It's roughly about four thousand dollars a year for the twenty-year period, and that's a rental, basically a lease to use the roof, and that's the payment instead of tax.
Give us for the roof usage?
Yes.
Okay, I yield, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Anything further? Consul of Herrera?
That money goes to the school department's side, or does that come to the city?
It is to the city.
Thank you, Ken.
Anytime I can help.
We could use it. We need it for trash.
That's the least I can do. You just gave me one point two million.
There you go. Thank you.
Counselor, anything further for Mister Pacheco?
Thank you, Ken.
Very good. Motion has been made to accept the mayor's letter and adopt both orders, A and B have been made and seconded. Roll call, folks. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion? Kilby?
Yes.
Lalabie LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number nine is the mayor's communication and a resolution regarding a statement of interest for the core program of the Mass School Building Authority on the former Stone School located on Globe Street.
We have Mister Pacheco here. We don't need to waive the rules. He's already here. If you have additional questions on this, is there a motion?
Motion to adopt, place on file.
Motion to accept and adopt the statement of interest has been made by Consul Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Consul Peckham. Discussion. Consul of Herrera?
Is this for the, another kindergarten program, Mister Pacheco?
So this, where, it's twofold. We're trying to preserve the Stone School on Globe Street, twelve oh seven Globe. And from that building, to put an addition on that building that will house between twenty and twenty-five classrooms for our kindergarten population. It'll be probably seventy percent, seventy-five percent of the district's kindergartens will go to that one building where we'll be able to provide a multitude of services to the kindergarten age group. It'll also free up the same amount of classrooms across the district, which will allow us to continue with the school committee and superintendent's initiative for class size reduction. Right now, we're, we're K through two, we're running about twenty-six, twenty-seven students in a class. And above that, we have some classes that are running twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And above that, we have some classes that are running 28, 29. I don't know if we have any at 30. So what we're trying to do is get those numbers to be 25 or less across the district at some point. And by adding this kindergarten center, it'll do that. Some of the, the conversation has been around transportation and kindergarten is one of the few groups that parents usually drive students to. So our kindergarten transportation, with the exception of special needs and students who live quite a ways away from the city, the city limits, so to speak, reservation in, in Deep North End. Those students are sometimes transported by bus because of the distance away from their neighborhood school anyway. But normally, parents do drive kindergarteners to school. So by relocating all the kindergarteners in one place, we're not going to affect transportation. What we should be able to do is have a reduction in transportation based on the fact that more of our students in their neighborhood will be able to go to neighborhood schools, freeing up these classrooms in those individual schools.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco.
Ayil, thank you. Counselor Lee?
Hi, Mr. Pacheco, how you doing?
Good, good.
I, real quick, I read through this and it just, there's a statement that says that this is not a monetary situation right now, just a statement of interest. But do you have an idea if this goes all the way through, what the cost would be overall?
I, I certainly do. I wouldn't come down here knowing sooner or later that that question would come up. So using an escalator, we're talking about a building the size of Fonsica. When it's finished, a two-story building that'll, that'll surround the property, leaving some parking on Pebble Street and creating an indoor, an enclosed courtyard, free air, but enclosed by the building for students to play in with different playgrounds in it. The building would consist of a cafeteria. It would also have specialized areas for different specialties, music and art and office area. But that building, as a two-story building, again, as the size of Fonsica, roughly 120,000 square feet, that building with an escalator could be 48 to 57 million, which would be in about three and a half to four years. Because the process would be, as we did with Durfee, SOI would be going in this year. It would be approved or not approved by the end of the year. If approved, it would move into feasibility study. Feasibility study for a building like this is about a half a million dollars. So we will be coming back to you for a half a million dollars, of which 80% would be reimbursed. And then if it would go into the next step, that would be where the dollars would come in. So we're looking at sometime in '22, '23 before we would be that far along in this process. And then long-term bonding somewhere around '25, '26.
Okay, thank you, Ayil.
Thank you, Counselor Dion.
Hello, Mr. Pacheco, how are you?
Good, good.
Good. So I'm understanding that in addition is going to be put on the present structure and that's what's going to house the kindergarteners. What, and the rest of the building will be used for the other programs? Is that what you were saying?
So the entire building, the entire building would be used for kindergarteners. But basically, we would have a two-story building connecting to a two-story building, the focus point being the old Stone School, built in 1910. And the surrounding structure wouldn't be classrooms. It would be pull-out rooms, it would have music rooms, a library of sorts. It would have a cafeteria, a kitchen, you know, warming kitchen, the food would be delivered there on the interior of this building. So most schools are built like, like donuts with the center open. And the reason for that is to provide light in every classroom, so natural lighting. It'll also allow us to have a very protective play area inside where no one can get to the students and they can have a playground area, probably a little area where they could do storytelling, different kinds of things that'll be built right into that outside structure. And then the gym cafeteria area would also be used, obviously, when rainy days, so that the students would have that outside activity. It would house everything that regular schools have. So all of our other schools, it would be basically the same services, the nurse, all of the add-on services, admin. But it would house it in one area. I say 20 to 25 because depending on the size of the room, kindergarten classrooms, all kindergarten classrooms have bathrooms built in them. So that takes up a little space. So two rooms would share one set of bathrooms in between the two rooms and so on, all the way down and around the, around the corridors. But again, it, it provides us a location where we can do a full range of services that currently we're doing in eight or nine schools.
So all construction and all renovations would qualify for the 80% reimbursement?
The renovations on the, the renovations on the current building would be eligible for 80, 20, but the rate in which you are reimbursed is a little less. So for instance, Durfee High School, the main building is being reimbursed at $320 per square foot construction cost. The going rate or what we're paying is 410 per square foot. So that delta is why we lose that off of the 80%. That would be no different in this building. The renovation side is about the same, but the work involved in there is a little different because you do have a structure. And again, the idea was to preserve that structure. So we wouldn't have to put an elevator in the old building because we'd have an elevator in the new building. And we wouldn't have to necessarily have a handicap entrance to that new, the old building because we would make the handicap entrance and main entrance in the new building. So the old building would be there structurally to add, you know, to the curb appeal and also to the preservation side of what we're trying to accomplish with that building and that neighborhood. But it wouldn't force an additional cost on any kind of ADA requirements that is currently happening at some of the other renovation projects we're doing with MSBA, like the Westall, RPA, Watson and Tansy.
And I guess my last concern and question would be, in recent times with expansions and new schools, we've had parking issues. We've had issues with people dropping off and picking up students at the beginning and end of the day. How would, how would this work out with this school? Do you see those same type of issues? Do we have the parking? Do we have the ability to keep everything flowing when they're dropping off and picking up?
So the, the design of the front of the building would have a loop that would allow us to bring buses off the road and in there. As I said, I don't believe the number of buses that we are using currently would be increased at all. In fact, I'm, I'm expecting a decrease in busing costs because of the location of the building and also the, the way that parents usually handle kindergarten students. As far as parking, off-street parking, we would have enough parking for all of our faculty and staff off the back of the building to provide what we need to provide. And then a small amount of parking would be accessible in the front of the building. But again, it's a pick-up and drop-off kindergarten is a little different because there's a lot of hand-holding in kindergarten and that would have to be addressed. So again, as part of this feasibility study, MSBA just doesn't give us money, you know, to, to spend haphazardly. They would do all the traffic studies and all of this design work. Some of that work wasn't done because it wasn't required to be done in the, in the excess that it is today. The amount of traffic study that's done today for these school construction buildings is, is pretty extensive. So it would be done in this, in this site. And we would expect that that traffic flow would be fine. Globe Street is a wide street and the property has a presence on Globe Street, pretty lengthy. So with, with the building sitting close to Globe Street, we're going to be able to have some parking in front, but also some off-road drop-off area.
Hey, thank you very much, with that, Ayil.
Thank you. Counselor Pelletier?
Kenny, can, can the city afford this with everything that's going on, the virus? We're going to see a shortfall, I'm sure. Where are we going to get the money to run the city of Florida? How much money, how many millions are we going to spend here?
So Counselor, it's, it's three years down the road, maybe four, depending on how quickly everything moves. It won't be shorter than three years from now. This particular portion has no fee associated with it. When you're invited into the next round, the feasibility study round, it's a half a million dollars. At best, Durfee was a million dollars. So I'm, I'm putting a half a million dollar price tag on this. It may not be that, but to be safe, I'm putting a half a million, of which only 20% will actually be a cost to the city. Will be reimbursed, you know, quite a bit of that money. And then at, after that, we're talking two years from now, it would be the city to make a commitment to build a new building at anywhere from 40, 57, 47 to 57 million.
All right, yeah, so at worst.
Can we afford it? Yeah, we're talking 20 to 30% of that 57 million. We're talking $15 million to $17 million added on to the debt service. Then, as Mr. Sahadi had said a few times on, on other items, the Durfee debt exclusion will be coming on board soon when the building is open. Some of the other schools will be coming off in seven to eight years. Others will follow quickly thereafter. Spence, Aborden Green, Sylvia will all be coming off a debt service in seven years. The newer schools, Fonsico and Viveris, Cuss and Laterno, those will be coming off three years later, four years later. So by the time that this, this hits, there will be a room on the debt, the current debt, to, to make room for this.
So you're saying that it will cost the city half a million to get started?
It's going to cost us half a million a year from now.
From now?
More or less. I, I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that the.
Half a million, we borrowing the money?
Well, we won't be borrowing any money for, probably until February of next year.
Half a million?
Half a million, of which you will get back. 350.
May I, Mr. President? It's, it's just a letter of interest. It's, there's no, you know, we're not locked into anything right now. Correct, Ken? It's only a letter. Just more interesting to maybe possibly get this project done. So they're going, all these votes and all these questions are going to be done later.
And just to follow up on that, the MSBA is, is no different than we are. The, the situation we're currently in is going to affect them. Their, their funding source is, is a penny on the sales tax. So all of the dollars lost in sales tax will affect the amount of money MSBA has to spend on the future. So we, we are.
We're just getting ourselves in line for the possibility. We're getting ourselves in line for the possibility of completing this, doing this project if we so choose.
Yes.
All right. It's a tough pill to swallow, I'll tell you that. I mean, with everything going on, we keep spending money, spending money. And right now, nobody's out of work, there's no money. We don't know what's going to happen in the next six months, whether we'll have the city open, the city hall open in the next six months. Who knows? So that's the problem, Mike, it's the money, it's the money. And, and you're talking 47 million again, and we got the Durfee school going up and, and everything else, you're spending money, new windows, new elevators and everything else. And people are saying, what the, the city hit the lottery or something? I don't think so. I mean, we keep digging in the people's pocket, the taxpayers' money and everything else. It's nice to have good schools, but gee, we, you know, we got to have a limit here. We're going to put a hole on this thing, that's the whole thing. Ayil.
Thank you.
Counselor, anything further? Hearing none, there is a motion to accept the la, the letter and adopt the statement of interest that has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion, roll call.
Counselors Kadim.
Yes.
Dion.
Yes.
Kilby.
Yes.
Lullaby LaBeau. Lee. Peckham.
Yes.
Pelletier.
No.
Pereira. President Ponti.
Yes.
Item number 10 is a communication from Senator Mike Rogers with regard to a recently passed bill to address challenges faced by municipalities and state authorities resulting from COVID-19. Want to accept, place on file?
Should you accept and place on file? It's been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Peckham. Discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Whereas numerous accidents have occurred at the intersection of North Main Street and Weaver Street, whereas traffic is steadily increasing in this area due to new businesses locating in the area, now therefore be resolved that the Committee on Public Safety convene to discuss this important public safety concern.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, resolution.
Motion to adopt the resolution has been made by Counselor Kilby.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion was sponsored by the resolution. Counselor Pereira?
I have gotten numerous phone calls from people in the North End, in that area. And even when I called to file the resolution, our city clerk had an issue there years ago as well. That intersection has become pretty dangerous there. In the last three weeks, there've been six accidents there. That's a lot of accidents, fender benders or what have you. But I mean, that was an area where someone was hit by a car. People tend to come off the highway ramp and take a right onto Weaver Street and they're not slowing down. There have been stop signs put up, but the tractor trailers are knocking the stop sign down. Maybe we need to talk to the state and have them put a sign, you know, further in saying, "Stop ahead." And then a stop sign, but that, that has become a, a public safety issue for the individuals living in that area. So I would just request that it go to public safety to discuss it and see what we, what solutions we can come up with. With that, Ayil, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lee.
I support Counsel Pereira on this and I, I'd like to, I don't know if it's going to be through this resolution or others, but I feel like there's many areas around the city that we very likely could open that discussion on through the Public Safety Committee. I also had a phone call, but it was a different area, requesting someone to look at the, the fact that there's a, just, people should be driving at 30 miles an hour and they're driving at 50 to 60 miles an hour in certain areas. Lot of concern when it comes to traffic. So I think this is a good resolution and hopefully it opens up the discussion for many parts around the city. Ayil.
Thank you, Counselor Dion.
Yeah, isn't that the same area where we were, that we talked about not so long ago with the poor lighting also? I mean, I don't know if it's appropriate to bring up that, the company at this point and what's going on with that?
Correct.
That's correct, according to the House, yep.
So where are we with that? I mean, there's a warranty period, there's whatever. Are there going to be improvements?
I'll defer this to Counselor Pereira. Counselor Pereira?
The lighting situation is being looked at. Because of COVID, it's kind of gotten delayed.[1739.00] But they have noticed that lights are dimming in the city, and they are sending lights, Mr. Bishop is replacing lights as we speak, and they're doing it in sections. We can get an update from Chris Gallagher as well. But to your point, to your point, Counselor Dion, and also to your point, Counselor Lee, if you'd like to put an amendment onto this resolution for public safety to also look at lights and to look at other areas, if Counselor Lee, you have specific areas, if we want to attach an amendment to this, then it can go to public safety with the concerns that we all have. I'm not opposed to that, certainly. If you'd like to add some amendments to it. With that, I yield, Mr.-
Thank you, Councilor Pelletier.
Thank you. You know, Mass Dot's gonna take over that Weaver Street, and we can dump everything on them. But, you know, when you got them types of business in that area, and people are flying around to go buy their marijuana, whatever the case may be, half of it on, they don't know what they're doing, and that doesn't help when you're driving on North Main Street, turning to Weaver Street and just waiting to get into the shop to get what you need. And that's happening at other places as well. You go to Tiverton, and they're banging fences, mailboxes and everything else. So, we got a bigger problem there. So, you know, we can do what we have to do, but the state's gonna take over the bridge, let them take care of it. And there should be somebody watching a little bit more the people that's shopping in that area. So, that's the way I see it. And whatever we gotta do to make it safer, but let the state do it. And people ought to be careful what they're doing and how they're driving. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor Peckham.
I think it's a great resolution. I actually, I've been by there twice, and the intersection is really bad. I think it's a phenomenal idea to look at these different intersections throughout the city, because there is numerous complaints. And it is about time that we do tackle the lighting issue in the city. And I think it's a great idea to forward both of those to public safety, with that I yield.
All right, is there, is there an appetite to amend the current resolution to look at all lights as well as other areas of the city that might also cause the same safety concerns? Is there, is that what I'm gathering?
I would like to make the motion to amend it and add the lighting issue into it, certainly.
Motion to amend has been made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Lee. Discussion on the amendment only, on the amendment. Hearing none, roll call. Madam Clerk, on the amendment.
On the amendment, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira? President Ponti?
Yes. Is there a motion to adopt as amended?
Motion to adopt as amended?
Motion to adopt as amended has been made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Councilor Dion. Any further discussion on this? Roll call. Councilor Pereira.
Can I just say one thing to Counselor Pelletier? The bridge is the only part that DOT is taking over, not the street. Before the bridge or after the bridge, they're just doing the bridge. Maybe we can get that to come on board too, though.
I put my two cents in.
What is it?
Let them take it over, put some lights there, whatever they wanna do, I have no problem.
Well, I think that it's a good idea, when you spoke about that, that when the Committee on Public Safety meets, maybe they can have somebody from DOT come down as well.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
Good luck with that, right?
I know, hey, we try. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, motion to adopt as amended has been made and seconded, hearing no further discussion, roll call.
Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Aye.
Lallaby Laboe? Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Whereas Hyacinth Street has had flooding problems for years, and whereas the city of Fall River has purchased two lots on Hyacinth Street for drainage improvements in the area, and whereas these drainage improvements are now complete, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Real Estate convened to discuss the possibility of the city of Fall River selling these lots now that improvements are complete.
So, motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by?
Second.
Councilor Peckham. Discussion on the resolution, the sponsor of the resolution, Councilor Pereira.
You know, sometimes in this city, we allow people to build in areas, water signs off, sewer signs off, conservation, everybody signs off. Then all of a sudden, there's big drainage problems, and then they come to the council for help. And we spend taxpayers' money resolving issues that shouldn't have been issues to begin with, because you need to be able to say, "No, you can't build here because of whatever." Whitefield Street's a good example. Hyacinth Street is another example. So, the water department pays a hundred and eighty thousand for one piece of land on Hyacinth closer to Diamond. On the other side, closer to Meridian, a hundred and sixty thousand they pay for the land. Now, they have to do all this drainage work there. And a couple of years ago, when we talked about the one closest to Meridian Street, it was that a pipe was gonna go alongside of the land and drain in the back, have like a retention pond back there, and the person was still gonna be able to build. People gave the city a hard time, the city ends up buying it. So, we've bought two pieces of land for three hundred and forty thousand dollars on one street. That is a desirable neighborhood. Why we can't sell that land? And if the Real Estate Committee wants to sell it, you can give a starting bid price. You don't have to say it's open, nobody's gonna get it for five thousand dollars. It's not like a school that's full of asbestos. And I did talk to Mr. Ferlin about this. And, you know, he, he's new into the city as head of the water department. I really don't know him all that well, as far as working with him on issues like this. And we kind of don't see eye to eye on some of this. But I think that if you're gonna have the water department then own the land, you have the personnel to go there to mow the lawn once a week in the summertime? I've been around this city a long time, and I can't see that happening. The water department owns land on Pierce Street. That's not taken care of and maintained. Old Meridian Street, that's not taken care of and maintained. We don't have the personnel to do that. I do know that he's thinking of putting a couple of people on a team that would be the green team, and they would go around and take care of these properties. And it's not anybody at the water department's fault that this gets put into their lap to have to come and resolve water issues. But I just think it's worthwhile going to the Real Estate Committee and seeing if there's any possibility to sell these lots. Even if you started with a, you know, a bid starting at eighty or ninety thousand, somebody would pay eighty or ninety thousand dollars and build a very small home there. And if you're gonna tell me that if somebody builds a home, it's gonna create a water problem, then the water problem you fixed, you didn't fix appropriately, because one house shouldn't make a difference. But it just really bothers me that, you know, people are given permission to build homes in locations that then the taxpayers have to pay for the drainage problems of these brand-new homes that people bought. I just don't think that makes sense at all. Anyway, my resolution is that it go to real estate, because I have the utmost confidence in Counselor Pelletier to see this through. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Pelletier.
Well, you know, we bought it, we straightened it out, whatever we had to do there, we spent a lot of money. And like Linda says, well, maybe you can build a small house there. But who's gonna pay that kind of money to build a small house there? I mean, we could talk about it, it's something good to talk about. How much money can we really get? Is it feasible for us to sell it? And will there be a problem? Like Linda says, well, the problem's all set. You put two more houses there, you probably have another problem there. But we can bring it to the Committee on Real Estate. We can talk about it, and we can see if we are clear, and talk to the water department as well. I mean, I don't know what their thought is about it. They wanna maintain it, keep it, just in case there is a problem. Or will they tell us, if they build, will there be a problem? So, we'll bring it to the committee, and we'll have a good discussion, and we'll see what happens. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, anything further? Hearing none, a motion has been made to adopt the resolution and seconded, roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item thirteen is an order granting permission to Michael Kudo at 555 Broadway for the removal of curbing.
We take thirteen and fourteen together?
Motion to take items thirteen and fourteen together have been made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion, roll call.
Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Laboe? Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Motion to adopt items thirteen and fourteen?
Motion made.
Has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pereira, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number fifteen is an order granting permission to Robert Maderis at 97 Whittier Street for the removal of curbing.
This was the item that, there was an objection, there was an objection filed with this item.
We'll make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the appropriate committee to see if we can come to a resolution on it?
For Public Works and Transportation would be appropriate.
Okay, we'll make the motion to refer this to Transportation and Public Works.
Motion to make, take the items and move, motion to refer the item to Public Works and Transportation has been made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion, roll call.
Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item sixteen is an order granting permission to Mass Electric in Verizon, New England for a full relocation on Robin Street.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion, roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Is there an appetite to take item seventeen, eighteen and nineteen together?
Motion made, Mr. President.
Take item seventeen, eighteen and nineteen together, after reading, has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Peckham, discussion, roll call. Okay, here you go.
To take seventeen, eighteen and nineteen together, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Laboe? Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Motion to adopt seventeen, eighteen and nineteen after reading?
Motion to adopt?
Been made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Peckham, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Item seventeen is a storage permit for Colbea Enterprises to store underground storage at 372 Plymouth Avenue. We have Franklin Service Auto Care at 1101 North Main Street to store thirty thousand gallons underground. And item nineteen is mass electric for the installation of two hundred feet of underground conduit on Highland Avenue. Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
Item twenty is the police chief's report.
To adopt the police chief's report has been made by?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Dion, discussion, Counselor Pereira.
Oh, I'm one step behind. On item eighteen, I just wanna say that Franklin Service, the underground tanks, that's the old, the gas station at the bottom of President Avenue, near Morton School.
Yes.
I'm so happy to see that place being cleaned up, I really am, I just wanted to throw that in there.
Thank you.
But on the taxi cab, there's no police chief, chief of police reports are okay on these licenses?
We do have one marine consignment at 75 Ferry Street. We're still waiting for the approval from the fire department and deputy collector. So, those will, with the council's permission, that one could be granted pending those approvals. The license won't be issued until it's satisfied.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that it, they were all adopted, but that Leach DBA Marine Consignment, it's pending the approval.
Okay. I'll second that.
Motion to adopt the police chief's report and the second-hand license renewals be granted, subject to proper sign-offs, has been made by Counselor Pereira and seconded by Counselor Dion, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
Item twenty-one, auto repair shop renewals.
Is there any objections or anything like, from the police department, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. President.
All right, hearing none, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Peckham.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Dion, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
Item twenty-two is the renewal of an auto repair shop license.
Motion to adopt?
Second. Has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Peckham, and a discussion on this item, hearing none, roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lallaby Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number twenty-three are claims.
Motion to call Corporation Council, motion referred to Corporation Council has been made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Peckham, discussion, Counselor Pereira.
I just have a concern on some of these claims that we have that are related to a pothole in the street or something like that. Is there a way for DPW to get a copy of some of these claims? Or that the, um, corporation counsel would send what street they're on so that we don't end up having two and three claims from the same pothole?
Madam Clerk?
Yes, um, when the claim is received, it is immediately forwarded to the, um, appropriate department so that they are notified immediately.
Okay, and do they get a list of when that was repaired or something like that? It just doesn't go into a black hole, it goes to that department, nothing happens, like where's the... Okay, I'll work on that. I'm home.
We're not, we're technically not notified, but we do notify them of the issue.
Yeah, I just wonder, like, does the right hand know what the left hand's doing? How can we better coordinate that so we're not getting claims from the same pothole? I guess I'll have that conversation with Mr. Perry tomorrow. Not going anywhere. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion to refer to corporation counsel has been made and seconded, hearing no further discussion, roll call.
Counselors Skadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Laliby LeBeau? Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
We have minutes of the joint meeting of the City Council and Board of Assessors from March tenth.
Motion to accept, place on file.
Motion to accept, place on file, and approval has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Peckham, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Counselors Skadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Laliby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira? And Ponti?
Yes.
And item twenty-five is our minutes of the regular meeting of the City Council held on March tenth.
Motion to approve and place on file.
Motion to approve and place on file has been made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Pereira, is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call.
Counselors Skadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Laliby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
Item twenty-six are drain layer licenses.
We do have, we do have two of the drain layers that are listed that did not complete their documentation. I would suggest that the council either table those two, which are GeoSearch Incorporated and Narragansett Improvement Company,